Good evening. The January tenth, 2012 Planning Commission meeting is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel Two, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, and Tuesday at 5:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. If you could please now stand and join us for the Pledge Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, if you could please check the roll.
Yes. Chair Quinn?
Here.
Vice Chair Flengus?
Here.
Commissioner Goines?
Present.
Commissioner Truesdale?
Present.
Commissioner Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Here.
Commissioner Schlotman?
Present.
Thank you.
I call to your attention the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and the review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. We're now at public comment. All comments made under this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members here in the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please come now, state your name for the record.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, Number 13. Are they keeping those signs nice?
Mr. Farlow, when we get to Number 13, we'll make sure and answer that question for you. Thank you. We'll move on now to Number Five. This will be a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of December thirteenth, 2011.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes from the last Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. That passes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for this action?
Chair Quinn, Item Twenty-One, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the February fourteenth, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. And Item Thirty-four, the applicant has requested this item be obeyed to the February fourteenth Planning Commission meeting.
Would you like to speak on one of these items?
I represent Item Number Forty-two, Laura Dreia, 520 South Fourth Street. We'd like this item to be tabled.
Number forty-two to be tabled? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll have a motion from Commissioner Flengus regarding these housekeeping items.
Madam Chairman, I move that we obey Item Number Twenty-One to the February fourteenth, 2012 Planning Commission meeting, as well as Item Number Thirty-four also to be obeyed to the February fourteenth, 2012 Planning Commission meeting. And then I would move to table Item Number Forty-two as well.
Thank you. Please vote. And that motion carries. We're now on to the consent items. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or an applicant so desires.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on Item Thirteen of the One Motion, One Vote, inasmuch as...
Glad we're the consent agenda.
Sorry. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. And that motion is approved.
Madam Chair, Item Seven is final action in the absence of an appeal within seven days, and then Item Number Eight will go forward to the February fifteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you. We're now on to the One Motion, One Vote. The following are items that may be considered in One Motion, One Vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all the standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Number Nine, zoning forty-three, seven ninety-two. Applicant, Weight, Montecito Real Estate, LLC. Owner, Centennial and Durango, LLC. For possible action on a request for a rezoning from you, undeveloped TC Town Central General Plan Designation to TC Town Center, MSTC, Main Street Mixed-Use Town Center. Special land use designation at the northwest corner of Grand Montecito Parkway and Clark County, two fifteen. Number Ten, SDR forty-three, seven ninety. For possible action on a request for site development plan review for a proposed parking lot with waivers of the Town Center Landscape Buffer and Parking Lot Landscaping Standards and waivers of Title nineteen point oh-eight Landscape Buffer Standards to allow a zero-foot buffer along the north and south sides of a shared property line and a six-foot buffer along portions of the south and west property lines where eight feet is required. Number eleven is MSP forty-four, zero three four. The applicant is WRL Architects. The owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a master sign plan for a museum at three hundred Stewart Number twelve, RQR four-three-nine-four-five. The applicant owner is Sonell Incorporated. For possible action on a required review of a previously approved special use permit, SUP three-seven-nine-zero-five, for twenty-two hotel resident units within an existing sixty-eight unit motel at ten twenty-eight Fremont Street. Number thirteen is an RQR forty-four, zero thirty. Applicant owner, Sheetuck Development, for possible action on a required review of a previously approved special use permit, SUP twelve-seventy-four, for a fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign to be fifty-five feet tall where forty feet is the maximum height allowed at twenty-two fifty-two Paradise Road. Number fourteen, SUP four-three-nine-six-three. The applicant is AutoZone Incorporated, and the owner, twelve-hundred South Rainbow Holdings, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed auto parts, new and rebuilt, accessory sales and service used at twelve-hundred South Rainbow. Number fifteen, SUP forty-three, nine-nine-two. Applicant, Golden Trade. Owner, Seabreeze Village, LLC. For a possible action on a request for a special use permit for a thirteen-hundred-square-foot jewelry store, Class Three, at seventeen-fifty North Buffalo, Suite one-ten. Number sixteen, SUP forty-three, nine-nine-eight. Applicant is Tiffany Bogan. Owner, Becker Equities, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed astrologer, hypnotist, or psychic art and science use at one oh-six South Jones Boulevard. Number seventeen, SDR forty-three, nine-sixty. The applicant is Lost Call Corporation, DBA Taco Bell. The owner, ADSC LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-one-square-foot restaurant with drive-through with waivers of perimeter landscaping buffer with standards to allow ten feet where fifteen feet is required along the north and west property lines at the southeast corner of Mayflower Lane and Decatur Boulevard. And number eighteen, SDR four-three-nine-seven-five. The applicant, SDA Incorporated, and the owner is the City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, SDR four-one-six-zero-one, for a proposed ten-story, one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-square-foot office building and an eight-story parking garage at the southeast corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Clark Avenue. I'll now open the public hearing. If there's anybody here that would wish to speak on any of these items, come forward now. If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll have a motion.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to abstain on Item Thirteen, as I have a financial interest in the property.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'll be abstaining on Item Number Fifteen, as my law firm represents the representative of the applicant. I will also be abstaining on Item Sixteen, because a principal of the applicant, Mr. Ernie Becker, I represented clients against him in extensive litigation, so I'll be abstaining there as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. On Number Sixteen, do we have a photo of that? I'm interested in the landscaping on that. Has that been checked out or anything? Because landscaping's always been an issue in this neck of the woods.
Number Sixteen, do we have a photo, Mr. Gapke? There it is, Mr. Farlow.
Madam Chair, I would suggest that this is going to be one that's going to have extensive comments, that we take this off the One Motion, One Vote, and then just consider this after you make your motion on the One Motion.
We need some landscaping.
Okay, we're going to take Number Sixteen off the One Motion, One Vote, SUP four-three-nine-nine-eight, and we'll hear that at the beginning of the public hearing?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Okay, at the beginning of the public hearing. Thank you. Is that what you're going to talk about?
Yeah.
Okay, so just a minute. Hearing no more, I think I'll ask Commissioner Goines to make the, if you don't mind, the recommendation for the One Motion, One Vote, as you're not abstaining on any of the items.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'll move for approval of One Motion, One Vote items, Items Nine through Fifteen, Items Seventeen and Eighteen. We want to show Commissioner Truesdale abstaining on Item Thirteen, Commissioner Flengus abstaining on Item Fifteen and Sixteen, although we pulled it off. Move for approval of those items, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you. Please vote. So we're going to...
Madam Chair, if I might.
Okay.
Items Number Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, Fourteen, and Eighteen are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days. Items Number Nine, Ten, Fifteen, and Seventeen will go forward to the February fifteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you, Flynn. Okay, right now, we're going to move, we're going to pull Number Sixteen, am I correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct.
Which is SUP four-three-nine-nine-eight. The applicant is Tiffany Bogan. Owner, Becker Equities, LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed astrologer, hypnotist, or psychic art and science use at one oh-six South Jones. We now declare the public hearing open.
Turn it to staff.
Oh, first, we're going to turn it to staff and hear your recommendation. Thank you.
Chair Quinn, this request for astrologer, hypnotist, or psychic art and science use is for a building that is currently vacant. The site plan was approved via the building permit process and has been determined to be parking impaired. The owner also owns the adjacent property and has a shared driveway and cross-access, and the proposed use can be conducted in a harmonious manner with the surrounding developments, and therefore, staff is recommending approval with conditions.
Thank you. We now declare the public hearing open. The applicant is here, Ms. Bogan, are you here? Thank you. Could you, did you want to speak on this item?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please give your name and address for the record.
Tiffany Bogan, one zero six South Jones Boulevard. I think that this would be a very good asset to our community for the new-aged things around, you know, for bringing new things to Las Vegas, and I feel that this would be one of them. Very new to this, it'll be my first business.
Okay, so are you presently in the building?
Actually, I just have a lot of stuff in there.
You do?
No, I'm renting it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item, Mr. Farlow?
Ma'am, could you stay up here, please? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North Nineteenth Street. I have no problem with the use, no problem at all. My problem is with the landscaping. I see that, and if you look down that whole corridor, all you see is a heat sink there. All you see is rock and pavement, and there's just no landscaping at all. And if they have the sign, a monument sign or something, I keep going back to that one monument sign I told you about months ago, where they have a monument sign in a planter, you know, around it. It really looks nice, it cleans it up, but there's nothing here at all, nothing. And I mean, when people get off the freeway, it's kind of a gateway thing right there, and I just feel that it really has to have some landscaping.
Yeah, I totally agree with him.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Unfortunately, this application is for the SUP, not for an SDR.
Right.
So really, the only thing you're looking for now is the appropriateness of the use at this particular location, and not necessarily what it looks like.
Okay, so the use is fine, it meets all the codes and everything, so with that, I'll look for any other discussion, Commissioners?
Just one.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask my Commissioners for comment.
Okay.
Just, no, ma'am, just wait till we vote. Just one condition, I mean, I can support it, because it's an SUP, but what I would encourage you is, if you want to go ahead and put on the record right now, you can let us know you're going to landscape it and make it look like an inviting business.
Oh, I'm going to make it look beautiful, that's my whole dream for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Is there any other comments? With that, I'll look for a motion. Byron, we're looking for a motion.
Madam Chairman, on Item Sixteen, SUP four-three-nine-nine-eight, move for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Thank you. And that motion passes with Mr. Flengus abstaining.
Madam Chair, this item will go forward to City Council on February the fifteenth.
Thank you. We're now ready to start the public hearing items, and the first one is Number Nineteen, and it's variance four-three-seven-one-nine. The applicant is Continental Suites, owner, twelve-thirteen South Las Vegas Boulevard, LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow a proposed twenty-five-foot-tall freestanding sign to have a zero-foot setback where five feet is required at twelve-thirteen South Las Vegas Boulevard. Staff recommends denial. We now open the public...
Staff.
Oh, staff. Chair Quinn, a twenty-five-foot-tall freestanding sign is proposal on the street frontage at an existing motel. The appearance of the sign was approved by the Downtown Design Review Committee on November fifteenth, but has since been appealed and will be considered at the January eighteenth City Council meeting. This variance request is for the location of the sign only. The sign is, as proposed, would encroach three feet into the public right-of-way and would therefore have a zero-foot setback from the right-of-way. As the sign could be constructed to meet the requirements of Title Nineteen, staff recommends denial of the variance request, and if denied, the sign could only be located in compliance with Title Nineteen.
Thank you. We now declare the public hearing open.
Ms. Chairman, before we go forward, I'm going to abstain on this item, because I do own property within the notice area.
Okay. Thank you. Please note, Commissioner Truesdale is abstaining, and we're going to open the public comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Ayal Gamleel. My address is one-two-one-three South Las Vegas Boulevard.
Could you spell your last name, sir?
Sure. G-A-M-L-I-E-L.
Thank you.
And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Gordetsky, who is in the audience. He's the owner of the motel. Before Mr. Gordetsky took ownership of the subject motel about a year ago, this property was condemned, and it was vacant, unoccupied, other than by homeless people, for many years. Since then, Mr. Gordetsky has cleaned the property up, upgraded it, invested millions of dollars in renovations, and now it's a fully operating one-hundred-and-fifty-one-room motel, receiving great reviews on the travel websites. So not only do we help clean up the area, but the occupancy keeps growing, and so does the room tax for the city. In fact, since the time we applied for the present application, we have franchised with Super Eight, which is a big achievement for us, and I think it's very good for the area. One of the chief complaints, however, that Mr. Gordetsky receives in the feedback is that the hotel is very difficult to spot. The property used to be the Thunderbird Hotel. Now it's divided into three parcels, which I demonstrate here.
Madam Chair, through you, can I have you lay that flat? Because we have a camera above your head that'll show it on the monitors for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So how do I speak and look at it at the same time?
Those mics in the middle are live, the two mics?
Oh, at least.
And so you can stand right in the middle and just point and talk, and we can follow along with you.
Can everyone see this?
Yes.
All right, great. So now, what used to be the Thunderbird is three parcels. We have the Aruba, which is right here on the south. We have the subject property, which is here, and we have Viva Las Vegas, which is here. The only sign monument that was used for the Thunderbird is situated currently on the Viva Las Vegas property. There is no monument for the other two. Now, as you can tell, the Aruba extends all the way out to the sidewalk. Ours is set back. This actually, under today's lines, encroaches, but it's grandfathered in. What it creates is a hardship for us in terms of placing a sign. And what we've done, with the help of John Urick, who's our sign contractor, is created a rendering, two scenarios. One is this with the variance. This is the sign we were proposing. Behind us is the original monument that has the Viva Las Vegas sign. It's, our sign is dwarfed, even as requested, dwarfed by the sign behind us, Viva Las Vegas, who's the chief opponent of what we are applying for. If we do not receive the variance, this is the sign that will be seen driving north on Las Vegas Boulevard. As you can see, it's almost completely masked by Aruba, which again, extends all the way out to the sidewalk. What we are requesting with this variance is to extend five feet to the west so that our sign can be seen. And even if granted, we are still nowhere near the encroachment and the intrusion, if you will, of the Viva Las Vegas sign behind us, which I think you would all agree is quite large. So we think what we are requesting is fair, considering the unique situations that are present here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wished to speak on this item?
John Urick, sign contractor, I live at thirty-eight seventy Dawson Court, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Can you press that button to turn your mic on? Thank you.
Is it on?
Thank you, Mr. Urick.
I would just like to add that this sign does conform with DDRC and the city's intent to revitalize its trip and celebrate neon and get back to old Vegas and make it a nice thoroughfare. In order for the sign to be seen, though, it needs to have this variance approved and the encroachment agreement. The sign is vital to their business surviving after they've just spent a lot of money refurbishing this property. The Viva Las Vegas sign, as he has said, dwarfs it, and to be at any advantage or to be in a competitive atmosphere, they need to have a freestanding sign, and this is the only place it can be located, as their building is set back forty feet between these two Without this sign, no one will know the motel's there, other than their website advertising. They will get no drive-by, even with the advertising, people will not find it, they will go to their competitors driving there. It doesn't propose any harm to the city. Other similar-type variances have been approved by this Planning Commission across the street. Hostile Cat and Absolute Inc. both received encroachment and variances for zero setbacks. And this applicant is following all the proper procedures to do this the right way and get it permitted properly, versus just throwing something up.
Thank you, Mr. Urick. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak on this item? If you could just step aside, we've got someone coming up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Chair, good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, for the record, my name is Garrett Gordon, I'm an attorney at Lewis &amp; Rocha, today representing DeCar Enterprises, doing business as Viva Las Vegas Wedding Chapel. Their address is twelve oh-five Las Vegas Boulevard. I do have a presentation regarding the variance findings and the impact that we believe the variance would have on our property, but I think there's a key question that needs to be answered first, based on the testimony by the applicant. He indicated that they did sign a franchise agreement with Super Eight, and to me, that would require a Super Eight sign, which would have different dimensions, different shape, different sizes. Before you, tonight is a Continental Suites application that went to the Design Review Committee, was approved by the Design Review Committee, and is here before you today. So if it's at the pleasure of the Chair, maybe we should answer the question of, is this application still applicable tonight, before I make my arguments against the variance?
I'd like to respond to that, if possible.
Mr. City Attorney?
The only thing we're considering tonight, Madam Chair, is this particular sign that was approved by the DDRC or recommended for approval by the DDRC. There's no other sign before you tonight, and this is the only one, shape, size, color that you can consider tonight.
Right, okay, so the only one we're considering is the one proposed this evening. So there's the answer to that.
Is there any possibility to discuss the variance issue? Because if we can agree that the variance is suitable, we can come back with the sign and avoid having to reapply for another variance.
Well, I don't think we need to go back and forth, so I think we're going to let this man make his case, and then we'll open it up to the Planning Commission, if that's okay with you. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I would first note, based on that comment, that it appears that this Continental Suites sign will never be constructed, that they are going to be constructing a Super Eight sign, so it would not be applicable to be, you know, should not be approved today, because it's a sign that frankly will not be approved.
Okay, well, if I, I don't want to waste all of our time.
Sure. Sure.
We were just told by the city attorney, the only thing we're looking at today is the sign that is before us today. So we could talk about what they're going to do for the next twenty years, and we're not going to get anywhere.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
I guess what the gentleman's talking about, too, is the fact that if they do get their variance tonight, I'm not sure if the sign that you will see based upon the variance, I think if they change to a Super Eight sign, we'll just have to go through the DDRC, and I don't know if you'll ever see that again. Flynn, if I could ask the planning director, if you... if they... if the planning commission approves the variance tonight, and they want to then go back and change the sign to a Super Eight sign, will it just need to go to the DDRC or will it come back to planning commission also?
No, it would just go to the DDRC as long as the sign is consistent with the variance that is approved tonight. And that is, of course, considering that the variance is approved. If the variance is not approved, then the question is moot.
I guess the answer would be, Madam Chair, do you want to... if they're going to build this particular sign, then you'd be approving this sign. But if they are not going to build this sign, you'll be approving the variance, and you'll never see what the sign looks like coming back. If they approve... if they do another Super Eight sign, you'll never get to see that sign. You'll just approve the variance for the encroachment into the right-of-way, but you'll never get to see what the sign actually looks like.
Well, then I guess my feeling would be, I'm not comfortable voting on something I don't know what's coming, so...
So I guess it would be incumbent upon you maybe to ask the applicant whether or not this is the sign that they plan to build.
I mean, is this the sign you're going to build? You just said you're merging with Super Eight. Now we've all got concerns that we're going to have a different sign.
Well, Super Eight does not prevent us from building this sign in addition to putting a Super Eight sign, so there is an intent to build this sign.
So basically, what we see is not what we're going to get.
No, no, not necessarily, because we are able to put this sign and then on the hotel itself put Super Eight. We are not prevented from building this sign, and we intend to do it.
Okay, well...
However, I thought it would have been more suitable to discuss what is on the agenda, which is a twenty-five-foot sign with a five-foot variance.
That is suitable if that's what you're going to build.
Well, yes, if the options are, let's discuss this sign or not discuss any sign at all, let's discuss the sign. That's where the applicant stands.
Okay.
And we would like the option to build this sign, since we're here.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
If I may, if I may.
Mr. Farlow?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I don't know if this applicant's actually... or the... I'm sorry, the gentleman here has finished with his presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm happy to go forward with my presentation on this sign, or if you'd like to finish your dialogue on whether we're moving forward or not, it's up to you.
Go ahead and finish your presentation.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Madam Chair. So again, for the record, we represent Viva Las Vegas, which is the property owner to the north. Viva Las Vegas purchases property approximately thirteen years ago, has owned this property and operated this wedding chapel. They've been in the top three, the top five wedding chapels in Las Vegas for quite a while, so a lot of tourism dollars and really a good community partner. That community partnership was emphasized when they applied and received fifty thousand dollars from the redevelopment agency to debutification on the property. They used that money to do two things. One is to add this LED screen on the sign, and two, to install pavers. And the pavers went not only on the Viva Las Vegas property, but also on the applicant's property, so it really was a community-based neighborhood effort to beautify it. When... and that occurred when the bank owned Continental Suites. When the applicant moved in, they met with my client, and there's been ongoing negotiations about how to get a sign, how to finalize access, and how to come up with really a joint agreement that both parties can live with and move forward in the future. That agreement didn't get drafted, and this application came in. Our client is vehemently opposed to the variance given, and our dimensions are quite a little bit different than the applicant's. Here's the status quo of the Viva Las Vegas sign that you can see north on Las Vegas Boulevard. As proposed, with a zero setback and a three-foot encroachment, you can see that the Viva Las Vegas sign is absolutely blocked.
How tall is your signs?
Please finish.
To give you a contrast, here, in fact, is a... is where the sign will be located without the requirement for a variance. You can see half of the Continental Suites sign. They have these bubbles intruding out. I think it's clear that you can see suites, and you can see half the Viva Las Vegas sign. As you look north and continue, that seems to be a consistent theme, is you can really see half of each sign, you know, as you drive. I would also add the viewing distance. And I mention all this in conjunction with the findings for a variance. And one of the findings is that relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and I would argue that public good is twofold, that it's not impacting a neighbor that is unreasonable, and two, given redevelopment money was used for this property for both properties, that the public good is to come up with a solution that works for both properties. And we think, as proposed, our viewing distance is approximately three-hundred-and-fifty feet. With this sign and with the variance, it significantly reduces it that we think is frankly inequitable, unfair, and not in the public good. You know, my firm and my client and the applicant continue, as of this morning, I saw emails going back and forth, of trying to come up with a reasonable solution. One is to put their sign, which my understanding was a Super Eight logo, on the Viva Las Vegas sign. I think there's a great effort. We're currently advertising on the LED screen for Continental Suites. There's a banner there that's wrapped around our sign for Continental Suites. There is definitely an effort to reach a compromise on this issue. So we ask you to really continue this item, I would say, to allow us to roll up our sleeves, continue to negotiate. I came in here in a good faith argument to mention that Super Eight was going to be built, and in our negotiations, it was new to me, but it was said on the record that this Continental Suites sign would ever see the light of day, but I would ask for a continuance. Alternatively, I would ask for a denial based on staff's recommendation. I think staff does a very good job in their last paragraph to say that there's really been no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance of why a variance is needed, that it is somewhat self-imposed. If you look at what their sign would look like in the event this variance was not approved, that what they have, the legal right to do following the DDRC, this is it here. And I would say, you know, they've decided on a design that has those, you know, bubbles hanging out. If you brought the entire sign out to say Continental Suites, they'd get fair advertising, we'd get fair advertising, and I think it'd work for both parties. So I appreciate the time, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
May I respond?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. I concur with this man just said. The problem right here is a problem we have all the time when we have a developer, which is the bank, subdividing properties. If this was still one property instead of three, this sign would never be allowed, never be allowed. So with that in mind, I believe with the LED signs and that, I concur, there ought to be one sign and a shared deal or something they can work out. But still, again, they're the carpenters of their own cross here. It shouldn't... maybe it should never have been divided, but it has, so I hope that we can get something worked out. There's just too much sign right there that they're showing.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item that has not been heard yet? Thank you. Please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Elon Gordetsky, and I'm the owner of the hotel and the guy who remodeled that. At this point, all we're trying to do here is just to have business, because we get a lot of complaints on our website, and we have them here, that people are passing us by and they don't see us. Yeah, he got money from the development, and he walked into a property that's not his and put pavers over there without permission from nobody. That's exactly what happened with the city's money. The city gave him money to do something for his property. He walked into a different property, did some pavers without permission, which is okay at this point. We're not here to argue. All we want to do is to have a fair business. We tried to negotiate many times on the sign. We give them extensions, substantial amount of times. Attorneys are talking and talking. And the term... and you know, he is rejecting a sign that I'm proposing for my business. He has a sign. You want to share your sign? I'm more than welcome, but there's no give and take. I mean, they don't have an easement on the property. They're trying to establish parking. They're... I mean, we're running a business over here, and people don't see us, and we get complained for no reason. I'm running a clean-cut business. I spend millions of dollars on these properties, and some of the chairman people were there and they saw it, and they're all were impressed with what we did over there. It's a brand-new, the place had no plumbing, no copper, no toilets. It was just bugs sleeping over there. Now I'm paying room tax. I spent millions of dollars on Las Vegas Boulevard in the most depressed economy in the city, and I'm putting my hard money, my hard work. I work here every day, and I mean, all I want is a fair chance to have a business. I'm not doing anything... because if I don't... if... you know, I'm not trying to block his sign. My sign is not fifty feet. His sign you can see from ten mile, you can see his sign. You can't block this sign. This is just out of a principle to say no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For your comments, sir, we appreciate them. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak?
I'll be very brief.
That has yet been heard?
Oh, I see.
I'm sorry, because we're getting ready to close the public comment, and we're going to turn it over to the planning commissioners, so...
May I just reply to some of the points that you made?
No, sorry. Okay, so we're going to close...
Can I just mention the sign code?
No.
It is separated by a hundred feet.
No, we're going to close the public comment now, and we're going to let the planning commissioners discuss it, and thank you all for your comments.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, as more and more projects and more and more signs come down here, the visibility of the existing signs are going to be blocked, so just because this sign goes in blocks your sign, you know, I've met with both applicants on this project, and just very briefly, I think the best thing maybe to do is to request the variance for the zero-foot setback, but no encroachment. So basically, move your sign three feet back from where you're wanting to put it, and then you'll still have the visibility around the Aruba. However, you wouldn't be requesting the encroachment permit.
Is there anybody else that wishes to comment on this? Commissioners?
Madam Chair, through you. I love the sign. I think it works well. I'm a little selfish, though, especially when I'm hearing testimony about Motel Eight. You know, we may have a Continental Suites sign out here near the sidewalk, but a Motel Eight sign up on the structure itself, and I'd rather not give the DDRC, you know, final action on what this sign might look like. So if we can't work this out tonight, I'm not going to support it for any other reason than I want to see what's going to end up there, and I'd like to be able to vote on that.
It's going to be Continental Suites.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If not, we're ready. Go ahead, Gus.
Madam Commissioner, I heard from both sides tonight. I hear one side saying that you want to do a joint sign. I think I heard you guys say you want to do... you're amiable to doing a joint sign. If you're both amiable to do a joint sign, I don't see what the issue is. Obey this thing for thirty days, go figure it out, and come back.
Madam Chair, if I might just step in for just a moment. They cannot do a joint sign. Because they exist as two separate properties, if they were to advertise the Continental Suites on the Viva Las Vegas sign, that would constitute off-premise advertising, which is not permitted in the scenic byway. If they were to do some type of a mapping action that would make it a commercial subdivision, something along those lines, then yes, they would be able to advertise both businesses on that sign. But as the properties exist today, they cannot advertise the Continental Suites on the Viva Las Vegas sign.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale.
Trobridge.
Sir, Trobridge, I'm sorry.
Yes, I have visited with the applicant and the opponent, obviously, and this came forward last month. We continued a month so they could get together and talk, hopefully resolve the dispute. I think there's other things involved here that aren't really coming forward involving things like property lines and access that would, if strictly enforced by the owner of Continental Suites, Viva Las Vegas would be dramatically impacted. And I don't believe that the Viva Las Vegas understands the significance of that. I see you getting antsy, but I'll cut to the chase. You could get into your property. The fact that money's... city monies were spent to put in pavers off your property is an interesting consideration. You know, it looks like it was built for a joint use access, but frankly, there's nothing to back up the joint use. You know, I would like to offer that during the month that's going to expire while we review this or while this is abated or tabled as been suggested, you folks get together and realize the seriousness of the consequence of saying, we're not going to be good neighbors. You know, I think that you need to sit down with a cooler head and come up with some way to address this problem. You know, we've got someone that's came into a distressed property, made a considerable investment to improve it. A reasonable person might think that the neighboring property would benefit from the investment rather than having a unoccupied, empty structure. The only occupants would be people who weren't paying rent, let's just put it that way. You know, and I think that these folks are trying to do the right thing, and I think that Viva Las Vegas needs to accept that they do potentially have the opportunity to gain a lot by having a mutually developed resolution to this. Also, I do feel that, I'm hearing from my other commissioners, that the planning commission would like to see the sign that's ultimately actually going to be constructed. You know, to have another sign on the side of the building really doesn't do much for the aesthetics of the situation, also the expense of a second sign. I think that you could work out something that you might have a very attractive sign that gives visibility to both properties, and I think that if everybody would work together, the long-term benefit would help both businesses. You know, this saying, we're not going to do it. You know, I see what could happen as a consequence of that, and I think that I'd be glad to talk with you later what the consequence could be, or you could look at the property line yourself. And I don't think that a six-foot block wall going from the back of their property to the front of their property would do you much good. And so having said that, I thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think we're ready for a motion of some sort. Commissioner? Commissioner? Want to swing in?
You know, Madam Chair, I would hold this thing in advance if I felt that they would honestly get together and work together, but I'm not sure if they're willing to get together. We held this in advance last...
We did get together. We got together, we had a handshake, and the term sheet they presented did not reflect the handshake.
Excuse me, the commissioner's speaking. Go ahead, sir.
So we've already held this in advance one month, and if we hold in advance another month and we feel that we can get something, get them together and come up with some kind of conclusion, but outside of that, you know, just reading the staff's report and staff's analysis, they would still have zero-foot setback if they brought it all the way up to the property line, but if they would move it back three feet, they wouldn't need an encroachment, and they would still have visibility. So if I had to have... if I had to make a motion tonight, that's what my motion would be, but I'm not sure if we're going to make I'm not sure if we're gonna make it. Anywhere as if we hold this thing in advance another month.
Okay, so is, what is your pleasure?
My motion would be to have a zero-foot setback with.
So you'd be denying, so you'd be denying the variance? So, Flynn, we can help with this. You'd be denying the variance, but, or granting a variance of only two feet rather than the five feet?
I, I believe that would be correct. If I may just have that confirmed by either Mr. Gebicki or Mr. Rankin.
That would be correct.
Okay. So the variance that would be approved is to allow the sign to be two feet from the property line where five feet is required.
But just for clarification, the current sign that they have proposed is a three-foot encroachment past the right-of-way?
Correct.
So if you bring that sign back to the right-of-way, it's zero, it's still a zero-foot setback, is that correct?
Yeah, we need the encroachment. We need to be seen. If we don't give the encroachment, we're not gonna be seen. If you guys give us the variance two feet, it's great, but if we don't give it.
Excuse me, we're not talking back and forth here. So what is the pleasure of the Commissioner of the ward? Would you like to make a motion or would you like someone else to do it?
I guess I'm trying to figure out the dimensions of the sign. So it'd be two feet or three feet, whatever the sign, how much those, those little bubbles stick out into the, out into the right-of-way?
Three feet.
Three feet?
As does Viva Las Vegas.
So he, so if you want to get to zero setback, you'd need two feet, a two-feet variant, a two-foot variant, no, three-foot variance or five is requested.
So the pole would be located two feet back from the property line?
The actual pole is five feet back from the property line. The edge of the sign will extend three feet into the sidewalk.
Right, so you'd have additional two feet to get to the actual sidewalk.
So if I'm to understand correctly, the pole is five feet back from the property line, the bubbles, if you will, extend three feet into the public right-of-way. So there's a total distance of eight feet from the pole to the outside edge of the bubbles.
Correct, so it could be seen.
And so Commissioner Schlotman is requesting that the sign be moved so that the bubbles come to the property line itself. And so that would be locating the sign approximately three feet back from the location as shown on the site plan submitted with the application.
And that was the picture he showed on the overhead?
Correct.
Okay. Can we go back to the overhead just for visual? Thank you.
But you granted Viva an encroachment agreement. I'm assuming they do encroach three feet.
The LA E-Board's been there?
Excuse me, let's, let's get this going here, so.
Do you guys see there is this Viva Las Vegas here that I'm showing you guys? We're not blocking this. Nobody can block this. All we're asking is when people drive here or here or here, they can see us. If we're gonna be here, nobody can see us. Those pictures, they don't do justice because this is Viva Las Vegas. Even if we will be here, we're not gonna block them. They're like 60 feet and our sign is 25 feet. And we're not blocking them. They haven't, they don't even have encroachment and they didn't.
Okay, enough.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You know, and I agree with that. However, the next sign blocks the next sign, which blocks the next sign. And Aruba blocks your sign as the next sign blocks the next sign. So to reframe my motion, my motion would be for a zero-foot setback with zero encroachment.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
If that is the motion, we will have to change condition seven of the, of the variance.
Yes.
Which I can essentially, or completely take that out and, and write something that in the effect that says, no encroachment shall be allowed into the public right-of-way.
So Commissioner, your motion is for denial of this?
It, it's for the granting of a variance, but a smaller variance than what was previously requested.
Okay.
So it'd be a variance of what, two feet or five feet is required with no encroachment into the right-of-way.
Okay.
With the added condition number seven or modified.
Three, Mr. Chairman, what we will do is we will change condition seven completely to say, no encroachment shall be allowed in the public right-of-way. We'll amend condition seven to say, no encroachment shall be allowed in the public right-of-way.
Okay, so that's the motion. Okay, please vote. Post. That motion passes.
And this item will go forward to the February 15th City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 20, variance 43723, the applicant owners Oakbrook Realty and Investments LLC for possible action on a request for a variance to allow 10 210 square foot projecting signs on an existing building, building where eight signs with a maximum area of 32 square feet per sign are allowed at 321 South Casino Center Boulevard. Will the applicant please come to the, I'm sorry, staff, please, I'm sorry, forget about you every time.
Chair Quinn, this is a request to replace existing artistic banners with signage bearing a commercial, commercial message on a parking garage at the northeast corners Lewis Street, Casino Center Boulevard. These banners were architecturally designed to contain artwork, to visually break up the building mass for curb appeal. As a, as commercial signage, these would be classified as projecting signs, which are permitted in the C2 general commercial zone. The signs exceed the number and maximum area allowed by Title 19. No evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to justify the request. In addition, the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan Policy 1.2.5 states that the city improved the quality and appearance of signage through review, amendment, and consistent application of its sign code. For these reasons, staff recommends denial. If denied, the banners would remain as art and not be converted to commercial signage. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you.
Hi, Kevin Plunstner, Oakbrook Realty Investments, 1000 Royce Boulevard, Oakbrook Lakes, Illinois, 60181.
Madam Chairman, before we go on, I'm gonna have to abstain on this matter. I represent a, a lessee who's in negotiations with the applicant.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
We've got several businesses moving into the building on the corner. We're putting Moxie Java Coffee Shop in there. We've got, we're opening a food court with several food services such as, you know, a Mexican fair and Asian fair, Taste of Delight, a sandwich shop and a few other businesses. The problem we all see with that building is the trees are great, it's part of the Centennial Plan, but they block any air, window advertising, any of the tenants would have in the, in their windows. So it's, it's, they're at a disadvantage because people don't, won't know they're there. We're also trying to be a little more edgy to go with the new downtown experience with Zappos and everything moving in. We think we're part of the downtown puzzle. I mean, we could have put, you know, 7-Eleven on the corner, you know, and, but I, our long-term strategy is to make this more an integral part of the downtown area, not just for the nine-to-five courthouse. We'd like this property to be a little more, you know, to fit in with, like I said, with the puzzle of the long-time, long-term downtown plan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item regarding the signs? Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. We are designated a Tree City USA. To get that designation, we've made commitments to the Arbor Day Foundation. We need those trees to offset the heat effect and be, and also we need the shade, we need the beauty, we need the trees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anyone else here to speak?
But we're not asking to take away the trees. We want to keep the trees.
Okay, whatever, we're done with that. So we're gonna close the public hearing and open it up for the planning commissioners to discuss and to have a vote.
Madam Chair, I went by the site and on the west side of your property, if you put the sign blades along the storefronts, you could see those signs just perfectly. You don't need them up on your building to see them from two and three blocks away. And as the other trees on the south side.
Say the street, I don't know my direction there.
Casino Center would be the west side. You can, there's palm trees, which block those anyways, so. And, and there's, you could see the street blades if you put them down low, so I don't see why you wouldn't want to put them down low. Because there's pedestrian traffic coming from the courthouse, Regional Justice Center and all of the places around there. So I don't see why we wouldn't want to put the street blades versus these signs, which are 40, 50, 60 feet in there. And I could see that the trees, the relatively new trees along B, I don't know what the street is.
Louis.
Louis, would, would block it somewhat. However, as those trees become more mature, this will block the, the signs up on top as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Trudel, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, I think you've got an interesting location. I don't, unless there's a, a big influx of the residential, you're never gonna get that late night for a lo, for a while. But having signs that can be seen from Las Vegas Boulevard down the, you know, the Lewis Quarter through the, the creek bed is probably not the answer. I think if you looked at several, several urban options that are signs at ground level, a little, you know, a little more creative, I think you'd wind up with more bang for the dollars and we'd wind up with a greater streetscape. I, I, with these, the trees the way they are, you know, other than being three blocks away, you're not gonna see these things. So it, it's just gonna be a sign that we're gonna have to come back in and do another sign to do another sign rather than trying to find a, an appropriate solution. And you can go to downtown New York, downtown San Francisco, there's very, several appropriate solutions that are at street level that I think would be more valuable to your tenants. So I, I, I agree with Commissioner Schlotman about this isn't the, the way to approach this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for, to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you, please vote. Post.
Madam Clerk, if you could change my vote to a yes, I apologize.
And Madam Chair, I could concur as well with Commissioner Schlotman. Thank you.
Thank you, that motion passes with the denial.
Madam Chair, that item goes forward to City Council on February the 15th.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to companion items 22 through 26, starting with GPA 43887, the General Plan Amendment, the public hearing, application owner, The Lucky Dragon LLC, for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from MXU, mixed-use, to C Commercial at 305 West Cincinnati. Then we go on to number 23, Zone 43888, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from 4H High Density Residential to C2 General Commercial at 305 West Cincinnati Avenue. Number 24 is an SUP 43889 for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a gaming establishment, non-restricted, on the north side of Sahara Avenue, approximately 410 feet west of Fairfield Avenue. Number 25 is VAC 43891 for possible action on a petition to vacate a portion of the existing alleys south of Cincinnati Avenue and east of Tam Drive, Ward 3. SDR, which is number 2643890, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a 240,199 square foot, 201 unit, 10-story hotel casino with a 466-space parking garage and waivers of the downtown Centennial Plan standards for streetscape, service area loading dock, utility location, perimeter wall height, and wall treatment at the street level requirements along the north side of Sahara, approximately 410 feet west of Fairfield Avenue. Staff.
Madam Chair, this project includes a parcel with a vacant 10-unit multifamily structure on Cincinnati Avenue that requires the general plan amendment and rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment, rezoning, vacation, and special use permit applications as they further the goals and objectives of the downtown Centennial Plan. However, staff recommends denial of the site development plan review. The proposed loading docks are designed to allow all maneuvering to take place on Cincinnati. This will cause regular blockage of the public right-of-way and will have a negative impact on the adjacent residents. Staff recommends that the applicant redesign this aspect of the project in order to mitigate the negative impacts of the current, which the current design creates.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come forward and give your name and address for the record?
Excuse me, Madam Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on this item reluctantly. I do own, apparently the distance map shows it just affecting a small portion of property, which I own an interest in, so I will abstain on an abundance of being cautious.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, good evening. Ed Vance with Ed Vance and Associates, 900 South Pavilion Center Drive, Las Vegas, representing the applicant. We're here to ask, answer any questions you have. We've submitted the plans. We believe we have a great, great project here and we are seeking your approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Bill Kern with the Ballard Spire Firm, located, located 100 North City Parkway. I represent the Owners and Homeowners Association at the Allure Project, which is located immediately adjacent to the proposed development on Sahara. We have, let me just state at the very outset that we are in general support of the project. We think that it'll provide something new and valuable to the community, but we do have some concerns on the site plan. I have talked to the applicants prior to the meeting at some length. We've agreed that, perhaps I shouldn't speak on their behalf, but if, but if I can take the liberty of doing so, we've agreed that we would ask you to pass this forward to the City Council, but withholding any support on the exact location of driveways and such. What we're concerned about is the access on and off of Sahara, at the front of the property and how that may conflict with the, the parting traffic from the Allure. I think we've agreed that we can work amicably together. We realize that even if approved by the commission and by the council, there's still gonna have to be a traffic study and as you know, Sahara is a state highway, not a city road, so there's gonna have to be review at that level. But it's a matter of very real concern that while we support the overall project, that is a serious concern to us.
Thank you, Mr. Kern.
And with, and with respect to that, we have no objection to the other items. It's only as to the design review.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward and give your name and address for the record, Mr. Farlow.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow. They're asking for a waiver on the streetscape. Do we have any projection on what that's gonna look like? The reason I say that is this. The last RTC meeting, Jacob Snow rolled out the new, what they called the Completes Streets Program. And I mean, they're dumping a bunch of money into this thing. It's gonna cost millions upon millions. And they're gonna. upon millions, and they're going to start with Sahara. I mean, I want to know, if they're asking for waivers, how is this going to blend in with the RTC's Complete Streets, Complete Streets Project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll open it up to our planning commissioners. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the app, because I met with Greg Bordell.
What is it?
Borgell, and, you know, I really didn't have any significant issues with this project, but the residents over in Allure had an issue thinking that Exton, the site, that traffic would back up. And one of the items that he brought up was that quite often that the residents from Allure would park on the exit heading out to Sahara, and I recommend it maybe painting that a fire lane or something of that sort, so cars don't start backing up because traffic's parking in that area. And then I got a call stating that you're putting in a whole additional traffic lane. And then I got a call saying that you're not putting in a traffic lane. Can you?
Shed some light on that?
Yes.
Good one, and let me try to do that, and that's exactly what we were just talking about. As he's representing the homeowners association, we are committed to working on a, an agreeable solution for the exiting from our garage. As many of you may or may not know, we have a crosheasement agreement currently with the existing Allure tower. The project was originally designed for a pair of garages, just as we have it today, and we were to share entrance and exit, now we're only asking for an exit, okay? And so they've kind of had, they've kind of had all of the exit and the entrance for years now, since the project's been up, and they've kind of gotten used to that. So now we're going to introduce an exit, or we're going to start using the exit, but not the entrance. What we're committed to do, and this is what Councilman Kern has just agreed to with our group, is to work out a solution between now and City Council that's agreeable to both parties, in keeping with N dot requirements, okay? And so we're going to have that, and we've worked with staff on this, and we're going to come up with an idea, whether it's widening or something to mitigate the concern that they have.
Madam Chair, if I may, I have one other question. You have a waiver for utility boxes above ground, what utility boxes are you planning on putting above ground?
Mostly transformers.
And are those going to be screened from the public right-of-way in any fashion?
If you can kind of refer to the site plan, I can't, you're not seeing where I'm pointing, but out of Cincinnati, on the exit of the project, really, it's really under the building, under the hotel, and we'll screen it as best we can, in keeping with Nevada Power or Nevada Energy's requirements.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Looking at the SDR, you've got a denial recommendation from staff, and I think it all centers on where you've located your bays for.
Correct.
Loading and unloading. Approximately, how many trucks are we looking at a day coming down Cincinnati?
Great question, great question. And we've talked with some of the commissioners and staff on this. This is not the Mirage, first of all. One needs to understand that this is a very small casino, only two hundred rooms, and the bulk of our incoming truck traffic will be early in the morning, bringing fresh food in, say six to eight o'clock in the morning, and I only see one truck a day. We only have a handful of restaurants in here. We do not have any entertainment, we don't have any, you know, theaters or anything like that, so we have a small hotel, and I don't see, I used to drive eighteen-wheelers, I can back a truck in there in less than a couple of minutes. And I have it designed in such a way where those trucks, once they're pulled in, they're out of the trafficway, and then they're out and back to wherever they need to go. And they don't have to go back to the strip, they can turn on Fairfield and enter Sahara, or turn left and go Cincinnati and get back on the freeway that way. So I think, to me, this is, our choice was, as we talked with a lot of staff members, you want to enter on Sahara or Cincinnati, and our choice was rather simple. Oh, and one other thing, when this is not being used, I have a roll-down door there, you won't see any of the docks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter, Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman, Chairman Wollin, I'm sorry. I would be supportive of the project, and in regards to item number twenty-six, the site development review would suggest perhaps the addition of a condition somehow, we, there's already a requirement for a traffic study, so that doesn't need to be mentioned, but I would think that in a additional condition, it should say something regarding that this proposal should be reviewed in view of the Complete Streets, Complete Streets Project that the RTC is proposing, so that it's compatible, or at least not in conflict, and that the proponents work with the homeowners association, probably as the duly-elected group to represent the various owners, and also to work with the state traffic folk, so that what's developed is acceptable to them. And I would hope that you could do all this prior to the scheduled council meeting, which is February fifteenth, that's a lot to be done in just slightly more than thirty days, so that's my thought on the matter.
Thank you, Commissioners, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? If not, we're probably ready for some motions.
Madam Chair, for GPA four-three eight-eight-seven, I make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you, please vote. Thank you, that matter, that passes and goes to City Council on February the fifteenth.
Thank you.
Next item.
Madam Chair.
Before we go to the next item, can I just ask, does that, did that motion incorporate Commissioner Trowbridge's suggestion or not?
Not till we get to.
The GPA generally doesn't have.
The leader. It's time to talk.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, for item twenty-three, Z O N, four-three eight-eight-eight, I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, please vote. Post.
Yes, Madam Chair, for.
Thank you, that passes with Commissioner Truesdale, voting no, I'm sorry, abstaining, and it goes to City Council on February fifteenth. Thank you, on to the next one.
On item twenty-four, SUP four-three eight-eight-nine, make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you, please cast your votes. Post.
On item twenty, on item twenty-five, VAC four-three eight-nine-one, make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Please post. Thank you, that motion passes. Under the, one more.
And then item twenty-six, SDR four-three eight-nine-zero, I make a motion for approval, however.
Madam Chair, just because there is no way to pass anything on to the City Council without you making a yea or nay vote, you'd have to vote one way or the other, so that's why I think the, why the Commissioner's making a vote on this item. And then if there's another item to be added to this, then just as amended for the condition.
Okay.
Is there another condition that was supposed to be added to this one?
There was a condition that was suggested by Commissioner Trowbridge. I don't know if Commissioner Schlotman would like to incorporate that condition into his motion or not.
Yes, would you, would you be willing to repeat that added condition?
Won't be verbatim.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, staff's concerned that the Complete Street program as described hasn't been adopted yet, I don't believe, and is in draft form and currently under review by all the jurisdictions. I'm not sure how to review this project versus a draft document that's being amended as we speak.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin.
We received it last week, and we're commenting.
Okay, well, then I guess we can't.
By virtue of what you bring out, I'm surprised that you guys can't do anything, but if you can't do it, okay, so we'll, I'll drop that element in reference to the Complete Streets Project, and just go with the standard traffic study that's required anyway, so we're just talking about working with the HOA, as well as the state traffic engineers.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin.
Madam Chair, Public Works, just want to point everyone to condition number twenty-five, which we are currently requiring, that the design of the proposed acceleration/deceleration lanes, driveways, and proposed median modifications on Sahara Avenue shall all meet the approval of both the City of Las Vegas Traffic Engineer and the Nevada Department of Transportation, so I hope we have that one covered.
The only one that's missing is working with the HOA. Okay, then make that the additional condition, then, that we work with the HOA to develop a mutually satisfactory resolution to the access.
There probably shouldn't be a condition, maybe just a suggestion to the applicant, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
We're going to do it anyway.
Okay, thank you, that's, a lot of talking, no place, thank you.
Move to approve.
That was a motion for approval, please vote. Thank you, and that passes.
And these items go forward to the February fifteenth City Council meeting.
Thank you, we move on now to item number twenty-seven, with related items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Item number twenty-seven is GPA four-three nine-seven-zero. The applicant is Hermann Dad Mexicana Transnational Owner Gloria Saccido, for possible action on a request to amend the general plan amendment from L, Low Density Residential, to O, Office at twenty-five eleven West Bonanza Road. Staff is recommending denial. Number twenty-eight is a zoning for four-three nine-seven-one, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from R-one, Single Family Residential, to P-O, Professional Office, and again, staff is recommending denial. Number twenty-nine is a variance four-three nine-seven-two, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow three parking spaces where seven are required. Again, staff recommends denial. And number thirty is an SDR four-three nine-seven-three, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the conversion of a single-family residence into a twenty-ten, two thousand and ten square foot office building, with a waiver to allow perimeter landscaping buffers with zero feet along the north and west perimeters where fifteen feet is required. Staff recommends denial. Staff.
Madam Chairman, just a little history on this site. In nineteen eighty-three, the City Council approved a use zone variance to allow commercial use in a residential area where such was not allowed. And then again, in nineteen ninety, the Council approved another use zone variance to allow another commercial project in the residential district. The final use, the license for that use expired, and the site reverted back to a residential use one year later per the zoning code. Staff finds the proposed land use and zoning are too intense and not compatible with the adjacent residential uses in the area. Staff also finds that the request for the variance to allow fifty-eight percent deviation from parking to be a self-imposed hardship, and recommends denial of the variance. The applicant is also requesting a zero-foot buffer long portions of this, of the perimeter. There are no trees on this property and none are proposed. There is a minimal amount of shrubbery around the foundation of the structure and in the enclosed backyard. The lack of perimeter landscaping creates a stark visual negative aesthetic look for the entrance into this residential neighborhood, and staff has recommended denial of the site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin, will the applicant please state your name and address for the record and describe the project for us, please?
Thank you, my name is Luz Marina Mosquera, seventeen twenty-two West Bonanza Road. The owner is not here right now because she lives in California, and the staff are the Hermann Dad Mexicana. Hermann Dad Mexicana is a nonprofit organization, also we're accredited, but.
Excuse me, could you slow down a little bit? I really didn't understand.
A little bit nervous.
Don't be nervous. This is my first time, to slow it down so we can understand it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just relax.
Again, my name is Luz Marina Mosquera.
Thank you.
We work for Hermann Dad Mexicana, we're a nonprofit organization, and also we're accredited by the Board of Immigration Appeals for doing all these kinds of services. So we really don't know about all this process, about the commercial house. When we bought this house, they was all like commercial, so we really don't know nothing about this, just when the city say, you know what, this is not commercial, this is residential. So this house was totally abandoned, so the community helped us to rebuild it, paint it, clean it. So we have a beautiful house there, it was commercial for about, I think, four years ago, and we really, we really don't know what happened with that house, and that's what I want, I am here that you can reconsider this.
If you guys can help us out, you know, reconsider the denial, as we are one of the only two organizations here in the valley.
Excuse me, could you state your name?
My name is Dora Lopez, I'm with Hermann Dad Mexicana.
Ms. Lopez.
And we would like to have the denial reconsidered, as we're one of the only two organizations here in the valley, we're a nonprofit, as we mentioned, and when we moved from the other location that we used to be at the beginning, it was because we were looking for, you know, due to our budget, we were looking for some, like to pay less rent, so this, that was the reason why the property was bought. But it was, we were victims of a fraud, because the property was actually as a commercial building, so that's, you know, the reason why we're here.
Okay, thank you, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Farlow?
Do we have any idea of how many people are going to?
Please state your name and address.
Oh, thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North nineteenth Street. Do we have any idea of how many people are going to work here? Because they're only asking for three parking spaces, and if there's going to be like seven people in there, they're not going to have enough. Second thing is, if I got the.
Isn't this across from Ahern's? Ahern's, and the problem, the thing I had with this, Ahern's has spent a fortune, a fortune redoing and making that Bonanza corridor really nice, and they keep it up and that, and to let somebody come in and just, no landscaping basically at all, it's not right. It's just not right. I mean, they can plant a tree or something, gee.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Farlow, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're going to close the public hearing and turn it over to the Planning Commission. Thank you. Commissioner Wollin's.
Thank you, Madam Chair. While I respect what your organization does, I'm looking at this purely from a planning and land use standpoint, but these are residential properties, they were intended to be residential properties, and I think anytime we start to take one of these properties and rezonate to business, we create the domino effect, which means if you want to do it, your next door neighbor wants to do it, and then we get what's created along Jones Boulevard, where we have a number of houses that are now businesses. This would clearly set a precedence of encroaching into this neighborhood, and I don't think from a land use perspective, simply because of the number of residents that are around you. I think this would be a dangerous precedent to set to begin to zone this as a commercial or business use. Therefore, I will not be supporting the request.
I just wanted to say that whoever sold this to you as a commercial property was not being honest with you, and we can't unfortunately help you with that, because it's happened, okay? So is there anybody else that wishes to make a comment in this before we have a motion?
Madam Chairman, I agree with you, you may have, you know, you should look to the people you acquired it from or through, but when this was commercial years ago, it was more of a professional use, I mean, it was, and you'd be hard pressed to find out. I mean, it was, and you'd be hard pressed to find out more than one car there at any time. And it was basically a billing office for a photography studio years ago. And it isn't appropriate as a commercial use with the traffic. Those neighbors over there have gone through years of, I'd say, hell with the widening of the freeway and all the delays and everything. And the city and NDOT have put walking parks down along the freeway to spend some, quite a bit effort to bring that residential neighborhood back with Lorenzi Park, I mean, Twin Lakes Park. And we would make a big mistake if we started down this road of having commercial zoning encroach into this residential section here. So I wouldn't support your application.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? If not, Commissioner Goinz, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chairman, item 27 GPA 43970, follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. Thank you. That motion passes.
Madam Chairwoman, on item 28 ZON 43971, move to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. That passes.
Madam Chair, on item 29 43972, move to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. That passes as well. Last one, Commissioner.
Madam Chairman, on item 30, move to follow staff's recommendation for denial of SDR 43973.
Thank you. Vote. Post. Thank you, girls.
Madam Chairman, these items go forward to City Council on February the 15th.
Thank you. We're ready to move on now to related items 31, 32, and 33. GPA 43983. Applicant owner is the Gilcrees Nature Sanctuary for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PCD, Plan Community Development, to PF, Public Facilities, at 8103 Russell Street. Staff recommends approval. Number 32 is zoning 43982 for possible action on a request for a rezoning from RE, Resident Estates, to CV, Civic District. Staff also recommends approval. And on number 33, SDR 43981, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a commercial recreation amusement outdoor facility, a nature sanctuary, staff recommends approval. And we now look at staff.
Madam Chair, before we begin, I'm gonna be abstaining on item 31, 32, and 33. As the applicant's civil engineer is also under contract with me.
Thank you. Mr. Rankin?
Madam Chairwoman, the request will remove the nonconforming designation and allow the applicant to improve the site to current code standards. As this request will bring the nonconforming parcel into conformance with both the general plan and the Uniform Development Code zoning designation, staff recommends approval of the request and finds that the use is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area.
Thank you. If the applicant could please state his name and address for the record.
Dan Valls in Compass Studio, 10799 West Twain Avenue. I'll be representing Gilcrees Nature Sanctuary.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything you'd like to tell us about this?
Well, first of all, we're really excited about the project. I don't know if anybody in the audience or you on the council have had a chance to go to the sanctuary, but if you haven't, I invite all of you to go out. It is a gem in the rough, so to speak. It's been there for a few years. And what we're doing on this application, the first two are really just administrative, the general plan amendment and zone change. The project, the property was in the county, was annexed in, so those two are just, I think, part of the procedure as far as that annexation goes. The third item is just really a site plan review, and that's probably the one that we really want to talk about. What we have done here, from the design standpoint, is after we visited the sanctuary and kind of the approach and entry into the sanctuary, it just didn't seem like it had a signature entrance to it. So we've kind of revised and shown, based on the site plan, the main entrance coming off the Russell, which is the main street through there. And really, all this site plan review is at this time. You can see we have a master plan for the whole project, the eight acres. But what we are focused on in this first phase is really just the perimeter of Long Russell, the new parking, and we'll be doing kind of a donation plaza. The idea of that is to, again, create a new front entrance to it. We're hoping that'll not only bring in more visitors, but you can see some of the proposed renderings of the entrance into the sanctuary, but also will contribute to donors and volunteers and that type of effort. So we're willing to answer any questions anyone has?
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll listen to our commissioners, Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. You're to be commended on this project, not only for what you've done, but for the changes you've made. I was not able to attend the neighborhood meeting, but my understanding is quite a few neighbors showed up, claws out in opposition to this. But once they heard what you were able to do with the buffering, the parking lot, moving that gate, it's actually going to decrease the sound that's there, and you now have overwhelming support, and you have mine as well on this project.
Thank you. Yeah, just like mentioned, there was, at the neighborhood meeting, there was four citizens that arrived in opposition, and after our presentation, all four of those were in agreement. So we were very pleased with that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a comment? If not, we'd love to have a motion, Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to item 31 GPA 43983, move to follow staff's recommendation for approval with conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. And that motion passes.
Madam Chair, item 32 ZON 43982, again, following staff's recommendations for approval with conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. And that also passes with Mr. Schlossman abstaining. Mr. Moody?
Finally, item 33 SDR 43981, move to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. Oh, goodness, sorry. That passes.
Madam Chair, those items go forward to the February 15 City Council meeting.
Thank you. Moving on now to number 35, which is variance 43956. Applicant owner is Wiseman Living Trust for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a three-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required and a six-foot corner setback where 15 feet is required for proposed detached carport at 2300 East Mesquite Avenue. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Staff. I've gotta go to staff first. I'm learning. It's like a baseball field. Staff.
Chair Quinn, the subject site contains a single-family home with a detached garage in the rear yard of the property. The proposed carport would encroach into the front and corner side yard setback areas. The request does not meet the minimum standards for the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district, and no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to justify the request. Therefore, staff recommends denial. If the variance is denied, the proposed structure will not be allowed to encroach into either setback area.
Thank you. Now please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Monica Gresser, 6326, Sunbrier Court, Las Vegas, representing the applicant.
Thank you.
This, we are asking for these variances based on, this home was built in 1948. It's in a quiet neighborhood. The lots were originally 25-foot wide lots, sold in increments of 25-foot wide lots. In 1948, there was, the owner bought two lots, built this home on there, and it's been there ever since. There was also another structure that was added in 1962, I believe. That is an existing garage, and it is too small to put a vehicle in there. So what the owner has been doing, as all of his neighbors have done, is park in the front, as you can see in this photograph right here. Many of his neighbors have built carports. So it wouldn't be exceptional that he would build one. It's not out of the ordinary, out of the norm, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Also, the reasons for building this carport is that the applicants would like to protect their vehicles. They also want to protect the front door of their home and have protection from the front door going out to their vehicles in inclement weather. Currently, there's been a little bit of damage on the front door of the home. You can see there is an overhang of the roof right there, but it's not sufficient to protect that entrance. So with this addition of the carport, not only would it protect the vehicles, but it would also protect the house as well as the applicants as they're moving from inside the house to their vehicles. I also have brought a few photographs from the neighborhood showing that there are others of their neighbors who have also built carports on their sites. Here's one. This one here is, this one is built probably very similar to what we're talking about. I would say less, it's more than zero, but maybe less than two feet off of the property line. If you go with, pardon me, just a moment. This one is built probably closer to the requirements. And as you can see, if we had to set back all the way to 20 feet, the vehicles would not be covered. Also, we have, if we set back, if we're required to pull all the way back from the property line on the side yard, we almost cover one vehicle. I'm not sure that we'd get much of it at all. Maybe, I think the measurement I came up with was somewhere around seven feet by four feet, which doesn't cover anything, which is why we're asking for the variance, is to cover both vehicles. And these are just a variety of other carports, car coverings that the neighbors have. So, and that's why we're asking for the variance, is protection for the owners.
Thank you for the presentation. Is there anyone else that wished to speak on this item? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I live close to this. But the applicant hasn't told you. And it's true, these houses were built in the late 40s. My house was built in 1947. And there's a lot of houses that do have carports out here. Precious few ever pulled a permit on them, however. These people do have a large backyard with alley access. There is no reason in the world that they can't put the carport and the protection of their vehicles in the backyard.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. Is there anybody else that wished to speak on this item? If not, we're gonna close the public hearing and we'll open it up to my planning commissioners. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, how do you access your garage currently? Is it from the alley or is it the side street or?
The existing garage structure?
Yes.
Can be accessed from the alley, yes.
Okay.
But as I said before, it's too small to put a car in there.
Okay. I just don't like seeing carport after carport on the front of these lots. And there might be quite a few carports in that neighborhood, but like Mr. Farlow said, most of them are probably illegal. Building a carport out to three feet off the front property line, I don't think it does anything to help the overall look of your neighborhood. And then by granting this and then granting others in the future to all the neighbors, I just don't see how these add any kind of benefit to the neighborhood.
Well, it's not decreasing, and we're-
Excuse me. I'm sorry. The public comment's been closed. Is there anyone else that wished to speak on this item? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chairman, just one question. I was just looking at the photos. There's one with a large, looks like a container. What, is that in your client's backyard?
The, next to the car? Is that what you're talking about in this photo here?
The big silver thing.
In the backyard by the garage.
It's in the backyard by the garage.
Can we please go to that photo?
I don't know if we have it on the, you can't see it. It's in our backup notes, but not on the notes on the-
The only thing I know that's back there, there's trash container, oh. That was an awning that was permitted in 1976, I believe.
Chair Quinn, through you.
Yes, Steve.
That structure is the existing garage structure. There is a building permit that exists for it that was done back in 1977.
Thank you.
Thank you. We ready for a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item 35 VAR 43956, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for denial.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. That motion for denial passes. Thank you.
This item will go forward to City Council on February the 15th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have related items 36 and 37. Variants, oh. I'm gonna abstain on these items and turn it over to my vice chairman, Chairman Flengas, due to my husband did some business with this client. Thank you.
Item 36 VAR 43989. Applicant is ACAB Taxi Company Owner Four Spaces LLC. For possible action on a request for a variance to allow 113 parking spaces where 133 spaces are required on 1.94 acres at 1500 Cyril's Avenue. The related item number 37 SUP 43990, special use permit related to VAR 43989. ACAB Taxi Company Owner Four Fours LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for outdoor storage accessory with waivers to allow storage within the required side and rear yard setback areas and to allow no screening from public streets where eight-foot tall screening is required at 1500 Cyril's Avenue. Staff?
Vice Chairman Flengas, the subject site is a previously approved taxi limo yard. The applicant is now requesting to reduce the onsite parking to substandard levels and to locate additional outside storage containers within the area previously approved for parking and also within required setback areas. In addition, the applicant is proposing to eliminate the screen walls that were proposed along the Gregson and Cyril's Avenue street frontages and substitute a brick pattern paint scheme on the sides of the storage containers. As the site was previously approved with adequate parking and no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented to justify the request for reduced parking, staff is recommending denial of the variance. Staff is also recommending denial of the special use permit as site storage would be located within required setback areas adjacent to the property line, would be visible from the public right of way, and would be a visual nuisance for the surrounding adjacent development.
Thank you. This matter is now open for public comment. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on this-
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as Mr. Nady is a tenant in a property that I manage for a financial institution, and it being appropriate for me to vote on this item.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
Good evening, I'm Bill Curran with Ballard Spa Farm located at 100 North City Parkway here in Las Vegas. I represent ACAB Taxi Company. This is sort of a recidivist application in that we've been here before on various aspects of this. And for those of you who weren't here when we were here previously, let me just give you a little background. ACAB Taxi located down on Valley View and Harmon in Clark County, successfully for about 10 years on about a one-acre size parcel of property. Unfortunately, with the coming of city center, the county condemned his property and put him on a fairly tight time schedule to try to find a new location. Being motivated to find a place with existing appropriate zoning, he located this. It was a abandoned, somewhat dilapidated building with existing structures that had been vandalized, all the plumbing had been destroyed, all the wire had been pulled out and so forth. As you know, this is located in an area that has had problems in the past with vagrants and homeless. And when I was first approached by Mr. Nady, I thought, nobody's really going to want a taxi yard next door, even if it's one that's appropriately zoned. I soon learned I was very wrong. In fact, I was with Mr. Nady, and we canvassed the entire neighborhood, ranging from businesses from our neighbors like Channel 3 to Anderson Dairy. On the south side, we have the Jim Rogers Car Collection. Immediately to our east side is the Archie Grant Public Housing Project. We went door-to-door there, and we collected 100 signatures in support of the various approvals that we needed at the time, there was no opposition. Since that time, Mr. Nady's been a particularly good neighbor, enjoys good relations with all of the surrounding property owners, whether residential or commercial. And he's been at this location for two years now, or maybe a little more. But we come to the point now at which the Taxicab Authority, and let me just say, originally when these applications were filed, there was no problem. We were able to meet the city's parking requirements. As time goes on, and now as the economy appears to be starting to revive, at least in some degree, the Taxicab Authority is granting additional medallions. Mr. Nady wants to be able to expand his business in the same way that all of his competitors are doing. And this is a slow process where they only grant a few medallions at a time, it may be a period of years, before more are granted. But slowly over years, as the community develops and the commercial needs expand, the Taxicab Authority grants more medallions. Anyhow, there's two parts, two applications before you tonight, related. First is for a special use permit. As to that, there's really just a couple of issues. First, as you, if we go back to that picture that was just on the screen, you'll see on the north side of the property, there is a chain-linked fence. That should be gone, we agree. We'll remove it, we're going to put landscaping behind it. Question might be asked, why didn't you take it out sooner? And I guess all I can say is that Mr. Nady wants to do all of the improvements at one time while he's got the landscaping crew there. But no problem with removing that, that's a condition, we accept that. Second issue has to do with the walls themselves. Mr. Nady has, as you can see in this picture, he's put up container units on the edge of the site, of the setback, exactly where the wall would be built. The containers are eight feet high, the same as the wall that would be built. They've been painted to look like a wall. I can say that they've been in place there for quite some time. There's been no complaints from neighbors, either in response to the notices that were sent out soliciting comment for hearing on these items, or at any time previously. I can say that as we've been going through this process, we've been visited numerous times by city staff, by members of the Planning Commission, and by city council members and their staffs. We have had the good fortune to enjoy good relations with all. I think that last summer, we asked Councilman Barlow, and whose ward this property is situated, if he would be willing to sponsor an ordinance that would reduce the city's parking requirements to be more in accord with the county's requirements, which are roughly half of what the city requires. The way the parking requirement is computed in the city is you have to have one parking space for each employee, and you have to have one parking space for each vehicle. We are, in the past, we've been in compliance with that, but as the new medallions are issued, it is pushing us. And we think that, you know, since the vehicles are out on the road. I was asked yesterday, what's the minimum number of vehicles that are out on the road on any time, and the answer to that is 46. So there is always ample parking there on the premises. I believe that the ordinance that we've been discussing for some time is currently in the works towards resolution, or towards consideration by the full city council. A question might be asked, why don't we just hold this until that gets adopted? I guess the, my answer to that is, we really need to get the use, or the SUP approved, because until that's done, we can't get our building permits for some of the things that are onsite. For example, we have a painting booth there where we can do small painting jobs. It's been there for two years, but we haven't been able to use it. So if we can get our use permit approved, we can go forward with all the other things we're trying to accomplish at the site. As to the parking variance, even under the existing code, it's only 15% reduction from what current requirement would be. I can tell you that, you know, anybody in the taxicab business hopes that as years go by, they're going to get more medallions. They don't happen all that often, and they're usually in small increments. But nonetheless, we would like to solve the problem for the foreseeable future. So with that submitted, we request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Curran. Is there anybody else present that would like to be heard on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. We've been arguing over this site for years, and it was way back when. It was abated, and there was something, there's chain-linked fences involved, and it's, and concentrate of wire. But the, but something caught my ear here. And that was a chain-linked fence that was supposed to be already taken out. And Dr. Curran's just said, well, Mr. Nady is waiting to do it all at once. So this thing has been, has been in process now for what, two years or more? And he's still waiting to finish it, and he's keep coming back for variances. We were supposed to have this thing all settled down, all settled down, all set up. Everything was approved and everything, and it was going to be fine and dandy. Everybody's going to go tripping through the tulips. And now here we are again. So if he's not, if he's not going to take that chain-linked fence down until he's all set with everything else, I mean, how many more years are we going to wait before we get the final product? We were supposed to have the final product years ago, and here we are again. And there's something about that that bothers me. The guy lied, said he was going to take out the fence, it's still there. It's a problem with that.
Does anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Now open it up for discussion amongst the commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Farlow. I think we'll satisfy that requirement tonight. I think Mr. Curran said on the record that the fence will be coming down. Again, this was one of these properties that was work in progress. The applicant had to hastily move from his Valley View location, and I think we're getting there. I certainly would commend him for working with us, although it has been a little bit slow. I think we're getting there. I can support the applications and the requests. I think the surrounding neighbors can support it as well. I actually happened to see the owner of Valley Broadcasting today during lunch, and briefly mentioned this to him, and he had no problem with it as well. So I think at this point, if there's not any more questions or comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion on item 36.
I don't have a comment relating to this, because I too support the project, but I do simply want to make a comment that shows that we're trying to be consistent. When we have a businessman, an investor, that wants to come in to the city of Las Vegas and address a, be it a blighted acreage like this was, or an empty building on the strip that was going no place. If someone comes in and is willing to take the gamble in the city to make the investments, to make the area overall better, I think that we as the Planning Commission and the central, the city in general should support those efforts. And I think this simply shows our support for the business people that are willing to invest in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Trowbridge. Anybody else? Commissioner Goins?
I'll make a motion for approval of variance 3, or 43989, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Please vote. Post. It should be two abstentions. The motion passes, noting the abstentions of Commissioners Truesdale and Chairman Quinn.
On item 37, I'll move for approval of SUP 43990, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions. And I'd also just like to make a comment that I understood that that work was done. And I work a lot with youth, putting them in job shadows, meaningful work experiences. And I believe the Boy Scouts of America helped design and finish that wall. And I just wanted to commend the applicant on reaching out to youth in the community, giving them meaningful work experiences, and ways to appreciate giving back to the community. So I just want to put that on the record. With that, I'll move for approval of item 37.
Please vote. Please post. The motion to approve carries, noting the abstentions of Commissioner Truesdale and Chairman Quinn.
Mr. Vice Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we're going to take a short break, and we'll be back shortly.
I know, a couple of times.
I wish you had my next hour.
And here. And here. Yes. And here.
Forgot my sub- sorry. How are you, Ben?
Everybody's great. Terrific. Saw everybody. Everybody here is in town. Well, everybody's back where they were, yeah. Patrick's baby is a year old. Girl. Yeah, great. Kids are fun. Growing kids are even more fun. Yeah. Anyhow. Good to see you. Thanks.
We'll be starting again in just a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna call the meeting back to order. And are we all here? We're waiting. No, we're waiting. It's rude. Just one second. There he is. Okay, we're back. And good evening. We're back to related items number thirty-eight and thirty-nine. Variance four, three, nine, nine, four. The applicant is Nevada Restaurant Services owner Nellis W F T L L C for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a zero-foot front yard setback where twenty feet is required in a zero-foot yard setback where ten feet is required for an existing legally non-conforming building at fifteen-eleven North Nellis Boulevard. Staff recommends approval. We have a related item with that, which is S D R four, three, nine, nine, five, for possible action on request for a site development plan review for an existing liquor establishment tavern with waivers to allow no landscape buffers along the east and south perimeters where fifteen feet is required and along the west and north perimeters where eight feet is required. Staff recommends approval. The applicant, please state his... A staff. Well, let's start with staff.
Chair Quinn, the subject site contains a tavern with non-restricted gaming. These uses have existed at the site since nineteen ninety-one and are legally non-conforming uses. In addition, the existing structure is legally non-conforming for building setbacks. If approved, the requested variance would bring the existing building into conformance with Title Nineteen. The applicant is also proposing improvements to the site that require approval of a site development plan review. Waivers and exceptions are required. However, staff supports the request as the improvements to the site, which include additional landscaping and building facade upgrades, will improve the overall appearance of the site and will bring the site into compliance with the current requirements of Title Nineteen to the extent possible without impeding site circulation, parking, or interfering with existing easements on the property. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. The applicant, please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Madam Chairman, first of all, I'm gonna have to recuse on this, because the applicant's representative has been represented by my law firm. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flengus. Sir.
Chairwoman Quinn, George Garcia, seventeen-eleven Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite One Ten. Commissioners, Happy New Year. Good to be before you at the beginning of the new year with a great project. It's exciting for the reason I think the staff generally described, which is we're taking a building that was built in the late fifties, a commercial building that's obviously in an area that's a relatively distressed neighborhood by my description. And you can go out and certainly, if you haven't already seen, you can certainly take that in to account. But what we're doing is we're going into an area, doing private reinvestment. We're gonna basically gut the building. We're going to completely rehab it inside and out. We're going to add landscaping where there is no landscaping, both in the parking lot as well along the edge of the street. We're going to add public infrastructure, including such essentials as a sidewalk along Owens, which does not exist today. So the variance that we seek and the site plan that we're asking for basically are to bring significant investment in the neighborhood, upgrade the property, and to make it as a lawfully conforming use. And we'd appreciate your support. We agree with staff's recommendations and conditions of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing, and we will open it up to our planning commissioners.
Madam Chair, I met with George Garcia, and basically everything that he represented to me during that meeting was substantially what he represented today. And this is just a case of an old building that was built back in nineteen fifty-nine per those codes and regulations. And we're just bringing them up to, bringing this building into compliance and adding a lot of additional landscaping. So I have no other comments.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to comment? If not, we'll be ready for a motion, sir.
On item number thirty-eight, V A R four, three, four, three, nine, nine, four, make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. That passes, noting that Commissioner Flengus has abstained on that.
Commissioners, thank you.
The next one. There's one more, sir.
On item thirty-nine, S D R four, three, nine, nine, five, I make a motion to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. Again, that passes, noting that Commissioner Flengus has abstained. Madam Chairman, these items are final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, and good night.
Moving on to related items, number forty and forty-one, S U P four, three, nine, two, seven. The applicant is Dynamic Development Company, L L C. The owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an accessory package liquor off sale within a proposed twenty thousand seven hundred square foot grocery store with waivers to allow a distance separation of two hundred and seventy feet from a school and a hundred feet from a church, where four hundred feet is required on the south side of Lake Mead Boulevard, approximately three hundred and fifteen feet west of Martin Luther King Boulevard. Staff recommends approval. An item related to this is S D R four, three, nine, two, nine, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for proposed twenty thousand seven hundred foot, square foot grocery store. Staff recommends approval. Staff.
Chair Quinn, the proposed grocery store is compatible with other development within the Enterprise Park Plan area and would provide a needed resource for the West Las Vegas Plan, Master Plan area. The intensity and design of this development provides a good mix between the commercial uses of the subdivision and the nearby residential uses to the north and west. The retail display and sales area for the accessory package liquor off-sales use consists of approximately two hundred and thirty-five square feet of the twenty thousand seven hundred square feet of total retail floor area and is much less than the maximum of ten percent that is permitted. Waivers that require distance separation from protected uses are required and can be approved as the proposed use is greater than twenty thousand square feet in floor area. Religious facilities, which are located to the west, are across Martin Luther King Boulevard, which is also a one-hundred-foot arterial. The school, or a school, is located to the east but is separated from the proposed use by the adjacent FBI facility and additional commercial uses across Stella Lake Street, which all provide adequate buffering. Staff does recommend approval of both requests. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you, Mr. Gebke. Could the applicant, please state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Teresa Wolfe, fifty-seven sixty-five South Rainbow, eight-nine-one-one-nine, here on behalf of the applicant. Basically, we're here before you for a special use permit for accessory package liquor off-sale and also reduction in distance requirements from schools and churches and also for a site plan review. Basically, what we're proposing is a twenty thousand seven hundred square foot grocery slash retail store called Dollar General, which is new to the area. It's located in the existing Las Vegas Enterprise Park. And as far as the site and the building, it's a proposed one-story mixed painted stucco, painted C M U, and aluminum front window doors, front doors and windows. It complies with both Title Nineteen and with the development standards for the Enterprise Park and as well as the site. As far as the liquor, basically, we are proposing packaged liquor off-premise consumption. The area for the liquor sales, as stated by staff, is about two hundred and thirty-five square feet of the total twenty thousand seven hundred square foot building, and it's located in the rear of the building. The entrance to the store is in the front that faces Lake Mead. And for the separation, for the waiver and the reduction of the separation, per City of Las Vegas code, when a property or a development is a master plan commercial subdivision, the separation is taken from the mother parcel, which is the whole entire commercial subdivision parcel. The store is actually located in this middle parcel. And if it was interpreted just to be the parcel that the store is on, we actually do need the four hundred foot separation. But because the distance requirement is from the mother parcel from the commercial subdivision, we don't. And as staff stated, there's churches to the east with Martin Luther King as the buffer, and there's also schools to the west with Stella Lake, the FBI building, and existing commercial buffering the school. And we feel that due to this and also the fact that in the C one zone, waivers are allowed to be asked for if your liquor sales area is less than ten percent, and the liquor sales in this project is one point one percent of the total square foot of the building. So therefore, we feel that this project is a great fit for the area and is compatible with the surrounding commercial uses as well as the existing residences. And we do concur with all of staff's recommendations and conditions and respectfully request your approval on this project. And now, I'm gonna turn it over to Damon with Dynamic Development, who's the preferred developer for Dollar General, to tell you a little bit more about Dollar General.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Chairwoman, Commissioners, my name is Damon Porter.
It's Red. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi. My name is Damon Porter with Dynamic Development, fifty-seven sixty-five South Rainbow, Las Vegas. My firm has been elected a year ago to be the Dynamic, or sorry, the Dollar General Preferred Developer for Southern California and Las Vegas. And it's a blessing to work with a customer and a client that wants to expand and bring resources, money, and hiring to an area that needs to have stores that are vacant, taken over and regentrified, vacant land that has been sitting for a long time reused into a brand-new, wonderful market with capital investment. We hosted last... We hosted last Thursday a neighborhood community outreach meeting at Doolittle to explain what Dollar General is, what they do for hiring, what we do for hiring jobs for construction, and we explained that this store will actually hire between 40 and 50 people from the neighborhood. It's a requirement for us to do, but it's actually their mission statement for the last 50 years to hire from the neighborhood that they serve because they are also their customers. So it's a wonderful thing to actually work in the store that you shop at and bring that back to your community. My firm is working on several of these in the Las Vegas Valley. We are bringing a lot of capital, money, and investing in these stores so that Dollar General can open and hire a lot of people. There is five of them currently open and operating, and they're doing a fabulous job doing that. Again, the biggest issue has been the sale of liquor. It's a very small ancillary item in this market. The market is 50% groceries and it's 50% general goods. So this service is not the biggest item in the store. They don't sell individual things out of a package, they sell the whole package, and they do that across the country, they do not change that in any one individual store. So it's not something to have concern over. I have no more things to say other than thank you for support.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Is there anybody else here that wished to speak on the item? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Sam Johnson, 1110 1012 Buttonwell Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. I also own property in the area of the store, 1960 North Martin Luther King. I'm opposed to the liquor license. Welcome to the neighborhood as far as the grocery store is concerned, but it is much as that it's within the boundaries of a school and a church and hundreds of kids every day cross that lot and are in the neighborhood, and will go in that store to buy items from the store. I don't think a liquor license in that area is going to benefit the neighborhood or that If you choose to go forward and give them the liquor license, I would like to have you see what a part of it that they do not sell single cans of beer out of the store. He says that they don't do that. That may be a policy today, but next week it may not, and single-cell cans of beer is not good for that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? If not, we're going to close the public hearing and we're going to hear from our commissioners. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and take a stab at this. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Johnson, but I believe there is a motion in there that says any type of alcohol sold out of here has to be in its original package, so what that simply says is you can't break them down into singles and things like that. I do appreciate your comments. I do apologize I was not at that neighborhood meeting, but I know, Mr. Porter, I found out you got a warm Ward 5 welcome at that meeting, both on the good and on the bad. But if you want to just put that in real terms, that's the passion of people that have an interest in their neighborhood, so while you may got beat up a little bit, that's a good thing. Just a couple of questions on Dollar General. You currently do have another location here in Las Vegas, am I correct?
I believe there's five active locations that are open. They took over the Dark Rite Aids that were in a few different locations, and they are operating. I don't have the locations offhand because I was not involved in those transactions.
Correct. Do all those locations have 235 square feet or more of liquor sales?
Correct, plus or minus a few square feet.
Okay, very good. Just a little history on this. This is just one of the first use on a bigger parcel. So this particular district is going to be built out. I believe the Dollar General here is going to be the anchor tenant here. I know some of the concerns at the meeting were the liquor use, but more importantly, the liquor use as it relates to youth that travel up and down Martin Luther King to West Prep Preparatory School. Now granted, a lot of those youth come from the east walking to the west, and they also have to pass another neighborhood mainstay of a store called Mario's Market. So they got to pass Mario's, and they have to cross 120-wide street, which is Martin Luther King. You pass a McDonald's, then you have the General Dollar, then you have the FBI building, Stella Lake Business Park, and then on to West Prep School. My concern, and I see your site plan, and I really like it, is that your store is set back. I like the streetscape, the fact that the youth now will have a more of a sidewalk curb and gutter to walk along as opposed to a desert, because as you know, kids do push each other on and off the street, and you see that going up and down. I can support this request. I think it's a sign of the change in the area. I talked to a number of business owners in that area, and they feel that this is the type of business competition that they need. They feel that this will not only complement the neighborhood, but it'll also complement their businesses as well. I know some of the folks over at Mario's may be a little opposed to the alcohol use, but what I'd say to that is that, you know, Mario's been on that corner a long time and has had an exclusive on that, and so I just want to let him know that this is good friendly competition, and I hope you guys will support each other as this moves forward. So without any more comments, I'm ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Flegus. Does anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Then we're ready for the motion.
Madam Chair, on item 40, SUP 43927, move for approval, subject to staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. And that passes with all conditions.
Item 41, SDR 43929, move for approval, subject to staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. And that too passes.
Madam Commissioner, Mr. Wolf, or Ms. Wolf and Mr. Porter, just one more thing. You know, I grew up in that neighborhood, I know my folks over there. In the summertime, we like to be out and about, but I don't want your store to be the Dollar General Retail Store and Community Park, which means loitering in the parking lot, and I don't want to put any conditions on it, I'm going to take it in good faith that you guys will control your parking lot, the loitering, the selling CDs out the trunk of the car, trying to hit a brother with three incense sticks for a dollar. I mean, those days are over now. Those days are over. We're changing the neighborhood, we want a professional look out there, we want it so that our seniors, that our families, that our single mothers that need to come over there and shop can come in and shop in that store, have some sense of security, and be proud that they can go into that store and make their purchases. So if you can put that on the record for me, I think we'd go a long way towards being good partners.
Understood, loud and clear. We will make you proud.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on now to number 43, SUP 43968, the applicant is CIM LL Las Vegas LLC, owner, 220 North Fourth Street LV LLC et al., for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 10,780-square-foot expansion of an existing 21,720-square-foot gaming establishment, non-restricted at 206 North Third Street, 221 North Third Street, and 220 North Fourth Street. This is, staff recommends approval, and staff.
Madam Chairman, this request will increase the gaming floor area by more than 50%, which requires a special use permit. The expansion area will cover 2,500 square feet on the approved but undeveloped third-floor pool deck, 3,000 square feet on the first floor of the East Tower, an additional 4,780 square feet is proposed to be added within the tenant spaces on the west side of Third Street, currently occupied by several other uses, and 500 square feet is proposed to be added to the third floor of the West Tower. Expansion is compatible with the existing hotel and casino and uses on the adjacent properties, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Could the applicant please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Todd Kessler, 206 North Third Street, on behalf of the applicant. We concur with staff's conditions and ask that you approve.
Thank you.
I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll put it over to our planning commissioners.
Madam Chairman, for staff and maybe Mr. Kessler, this expansion doesn't change the entitlements that have come before and all the requirements of the modification of the bridge and all the other things that we've seen, because it's like we're chipping away at this cookie a lot.
Correct. This is just one of the things that kind of had to be cleaned up, if you would.
Okay. When do we think this opens to the benefit of downtown?
Hopefully, March of 2013.
13?
Yes, not this March, unfortunately. We've begun construction, as you guys might have noticed.
Thank you.
All right.
Does anybody else wish to make a comment? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chairman, item 43, SUP 43968, move to follow staff's recommendations for condition, or staff's recommendation for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. And that passes.
Madam Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number 44, which is SUP 43979, applicant is Lamar Krupach, owner Melissa F. Maxwell, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed bail bond service use at 1110 East Bonneville Ward, Bonneville Avenue. Staff recommends approval. Please state your name. Staff, 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 staff.
Madam Chair, staff finds the use to be compatible and harmonious with the existing surrounding development and recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Osvaldo Fumo. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. My address is 1212 Casino Center, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89104. This is Lamar Krupach.
My name is Lamar Krupach. I operate presently at 3100 East Charleston, 89104.
Thank you.
We're here to answer any questions and seek your approval.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wished to speak on this item? I see someone coming on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kathleen Carr. I live at 1208 Norman Avenue.
Yes, Ms. Carr.
I just want to voice a concern about bail bonds that start to approach what is just a gateway into residential neighborhoods. This particular proposed project is very, very close to several old downtown vintage neighborhoods, and so I just really want you guys to take that into consideration tonight. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Donald Hickey, 401 Arnold Street and 89106. I live on the Alta-Bonneville Corridor, and, I mean, quite frankly, most of the people who live downtown joke comically about the ultra-saturation of bail bonds, and I just can't even imagine what the necessity for the business would be. That's all. And it's just not cohesive with the neighborhood up and down Alta and Bonneville, which are all vintage neighborhoods, without question.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Are we going to get some paint on that place and get it cleaned up?
Well, I don't know. Is there anybody else that wished to speak on this item? If not, we're going to close the public hearing and we'll open it up to the planning commission.
Madam Chair, if I may ask the applicant a few questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Fumo, who are you and how are you related to the owner?
I actually bought the property in 2002 from Melissa Maxwell. I am the owner of a property on Bonneville and Las Vegas Boulevard where the strip sandwich shop was. Mr. Krupach's bail bond company was there.
If I may interject, according to Clark County records, Melissa Maxwell still owns this property.
You know, and I did bring a deed of trust that is certified copy. We bought it, or I bought it in 2002, and the grant bargain sale deed was never filed. We didn't actually unearth that until we filed for the zoning variance or the special use permit, but...
Well, when you filled out this application, you put Melissa Maxwell as owner?
She is, yes.
And you're the contact?
Yes.
You signed it?
Yes.
And then you printed her name?
I...
And then it was notarized?
Yes.
So I'm trying to figure out, she sends a, she sends a postcard and says, "How can anyone change the zoning on my property? We're not changing the zone, we're adding a special use permit."
Correct.
But how, if she's still on Clark County records and you're putting her name on the application, but you're saying you own it, I don't understand.
If I could, I have the deed of trust, and it's a certified copy, I believe. I could hand it to you. That was signed by her and I in 2002. It was filed. What wasn't filed was the grant bargain sale deed. I attempted to contact her when we learned of the error. She has a back injury. I got an email from her friend saying that she wasn't even in Florida. She's in North Carolina or South Carolina recuperating from a back injury. I intend to clear that up, but...
So this indicates that she borrowed a specific amount of money from you, and in lieu of that money, or you gave, she gave you a deed of trust on the property?
Correct.
But, I mean, this is not really the ownership of the property. I mean, she still essentially owns it until she pays you back the money.
Until we file the grant bargain sale deed. It was us buying it from her, correct.
And then where, but where is that document?
The grant bargain sale deed was never filed.
So essentially, I mean, you still just hold a deed of trust?
That's correct.
And she essentially still owns it?
Legally, that is correct, yes.
And do you have her permission to complete this application?
I, when I learned of the error there, I tried to contact her. She lives in Florida. We contact each other through email.
Right.
The only email I got back was an email saying that she suffered a back injury, she wasn't even in Florida, and she was in, I want to say, South Carolina.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, to keep, I think there may be an error, a problem with this just because of the fact that our code specifically states that the owner of the property has to give permission to a, you know, lessee, you know, someone who's a tenant of the property or whatever, to actually conduct some kind of land use action on the property, and I don't know if Mr. Fumo actually has that from her.
We don't have the grant bargain sale.
So this probably should not have been accepted by the planning department as a complete application until they get permission from the actual owner to complete this land use transaction.
I hope to have that, but I'd say if we could table it then until next month, and I'll...
It's at your discretion, Madam Chair. Well, essentially, we need to strike it because essentially, it should not have been an application that was accepted.
Whatever you say.
Well, if we could maybe ask Mr. Flegus, if we could maybe let us know what you think of the planning director.
Yeah, I think the preference would be to table the item until we can get a properly signed application form in on the item.
And if we could, Mr. Fumo, if I could have a copy of that, or maybe we could just...
That's a certified copy you can keep.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Madam Chair, I'll move to table this item.
I guess we vote. Vote to table. The motion was to table, and the motion has passed. And then what happens, Director?
Madam Chair, what will happen, I think, if you work with the planning director to get him whatever permission from the property owner that you have to actually execute this land use application.
Right.
So if you will be in contact with our department?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number 45, SUP 43980, the applicant is Bell's Market LLC, owner John Gray Gubler, Educational Trust et al., for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a 2,400-square-foot packaged liquor off... use permit for a 2,400 square foot packaged liquor off-site establishment in conjunction with an existing convenience store at 515 East Oki Boulevard. Staff recommends denial. Staff.
Madam Chair, this proposed use will inhabit all of the available 1,200 square feet of the retail floor area and will not require additional parking beyond that, which is required for the principal use on site. The close proximity of five alcohol-related uses within a 500-foot radius contributes to an oversaturation of alcohol uses for this neighborhood, and therefore, staff recommends denial of the request as the use is not compatible or harmonious with the surrounding area.
Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Jay Motto's advisor, business advisor to Mr. James Shoshani.
Business what?
Business advisor.
Okay.
I'm James Shoshani. I'm the owner of Bell's Market. I took over Bell's Market in 2010, April of 2010. I took over a pretty beat-up business. It was pretty rough. It was on the verge of closing. And it was rough. There was a lot of riffraff, a lot of maybe drug activity going on. And when I took over, it, you know, we've been, we've been working a lot with cleaning out the riffraff from the area, pretty much. We've put up a lot of money over the past year and a half in improving the building, improving the lot. We repaved the lot. We improved the interior by, you know, we pretty much gutted out the whole interior of the store, improved it, redid it all, and took out, took out, we had a payphone out front that used to get negative activity from, you know, we got that removed. And we've added, we've added a lot of grocery products, food products that weren't there before to try to get that neighborhood store feel, you know. The, and the thing is, we're just, we've hit a plateau, pretty much, of, you know, improving and profit, becoming more profitable. So, the next, the next thing that we're trying to do is enhance our business by adding liquor, which we're not trying to add the low-end, you know, shooters, little shots of liquor and stuff like that. We want to be a nice high-end, and we're not converting completely to a liquor store. We're going to keep all of our grocery, everything. The liquor is only going to go behind the counter. It's not going to be on the store floor. It's not going to be refrigerated. It's going to be behind the counter, and that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? If so, please come forward. And now, let's hold on a second. Could you, if you guys could just move over a little bit. We have two microphones and we're going to start here outright. We're going to use one at a time. Say your name and residence for the record, and if, in fact, you want to repeat something that somebody's already said to save us time, let's just put your name on the record and your address, and we'll keep it flowing kind of nice, and we'll start with this nice lady first. Thank you.
My name is Helen Fisk. I live at 525 East St. Louis. I'm here to support him and his application. Since he's come in, he has improved the grocery. He's also brought in craft beer. He brings in items that you don't necessarily find in the other venues in the area. And as someone with different tastes, I'm looking forward to him working with us because you make a request and he honors it. He does his best to be that neighborhood store and to get you what you might not be able to find anywhere else.
Okay, thank you very much. Sir?
My name is Richard Stebrick. I reside at 1610 Rixford Place, and Bell's Market is literally in my backyard.
Right.
And they have really greatly improved that store since they took it over from Speedy Mart or Mighty Mart. And I am in a recommendation to, recommending you approve their application for the liquor license. There is no liquor store in that area except for White Cross Drugs on the opposite corner of Las Vegas Boulevard and Oki. And there's, and I'm retired and I don't like walking across Las Vegas Boulevard if I don't have to, so...
Thank you very much.
And they've really, they've really improved that west end of the Hunt Ridge neighborhood. It's been a really, really good asset to that neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. For the last five first Tuesday meetings, we have had complaints, non-ending, about this. They're selling crack pipes in this place and they're having nothing but problems down there. So, I think that Commissioner Slotman and Commissioner Goins, I think you two ought to get together with Metro and table this and that until you talk to Metro and get the lowdown on the nefarious activity going on down there.
Thank you, Mr. Farlow. We have two microphones, so let's, come on up. Don't be shy.
I may just put my hat on backwards and go in there.
Hi there.
Jennifer Cornthwaite. I'm at 706 Bonita.
After midnight.
Excuse me. Jennifer, what was your last name?
Cornthwaite.
Cornthwaite.
Cornth...
Cornthwaite. Wait.
I'm at 706 Bonita. Do you know, I have to stand here and say that, you know, to say that they cleaned up a market that's in my neighborhood is pretty ridiculous. You know, of course, it was really bad, but by adding a Western Union, I mean, I can't even go in for a gallon of milk, and I would really love to. My parents-in-law live in the neighborhood as well as tons of friends, and it's really just a matter of two things. If you want to, if you want to appeal to the lowest common denominator, what's there already, you know, how you can sort of turn profitability really quickly, or if you want to think about getting really creative, there's like 3,000 people that live within, I don't know how many blocks of there, that would just die for a really great market. I mean, we would love it. We would all support it if there was fantastic groceries, a little bit of produce, beer, even wine. I mean, all of this stuff is okay, but to, but to try to add profitability just by adding packaged liquor, you know, obviously with White Cross Drugs, like this is already on the corner. We don't need any more of this. What we really need is something really great and to, and to take a little bit of some effort to find out what the neighborhood needs and not just cater to the guy that's just walking down the street that's looking for, you know, a pipe, a single beer, you know? Like, this stuff already exists. You have a unique opportunity to really make an incredible business with the support of so many of us that live in the neighborhood. But, I mean, I've lived in the neighborhood for five years and, I mean, I've stepped foot even since there's been new management, and there's just, you know...
So, you're not happy with it?
No, of course not. And to give a packaged liquor license, I feel like is something that's, you know, it's an added revenue source for someone that's not contributing anything to the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
My name's Hart, H-A-R-T.
Mr. Hart.
I would like to go on record as saying I am strongly opposed...
Your address, sir?
1816 South Knight Street.
Thank you.
I would like to go on record saying I'm strongly opposed to Bell's Market having packaged liquor for off-site use. That whole area in the last couple of years has gone downhill very badly. True, in the last two weeks, maybe, they cleaned up the area right around there, but we in the neighborhood call that place Crackhead Market.
Okay.
There are constantly drunks sleeping out by the dumpster. Two days ago, I had to call the police because someone was passed out face down in the parking lot adjacent to Bell's Market. The other stores around there, I've talked to the owners. They're very cooperative in keeping the neighborhood nice and clean, and they say they will not sell liquor to people who are intoxicated. I have seen personally with my own eyes the people at Bell's Market selling beer to people who already are intoxicated. This is only about 100 feet away from where a few months ago, we had a youth get shot and a dead body found on the sidewalk. We do not need packaged liquor sales at that area.
Okay.
I'd like to say it's like throwing gasoline on a fire, but really, it's throwing alcohol on a fire. If you know, an alcohol fire is harder to put out than a gasoline fire.
Thank you, sir.
This is, really cannot pass. Thank you.
We appreciate you coming down. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Clary. I reside at 1400 Francis Avenue, and I'm also the Hunt Ridge Neighborhood Association President. And on a recent poll for this agenda item, I can say the bulk of our neighborhood, which is actually across from this area, I mean, it's, it's behind the Hunt Ridge site on Charleston, Maryland. But many people traverse through that area, go to the little ice cream shop, Custard, Custards. And I can actually speak from experience that I, being newer to the downtown area, having relocated to that part of town, I went to Custards to get an ice cream over the summer, and it was my first time. Everyone said, "Oh, you got to go there." And I needed cash because I didn't have cash, and I saw the ATM sign over at Bell's, and I was about to walk over there, and everybody in line and standing at the Custards Market told me, "Don't go in there. You're not going to come back out." So, and that was over the summer. So, that is just a glimpse into the high crime, the neighborhood feel, the vibe in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Clary.
I hope you consider that because this will shape that part of town. How you vote on this?
We really appreciate you coming down. Thank you. Hi, ma'am.
My name's Joanelle Thomas, 1509 South Fifth Place. I'm the Vice President of the John S. Park Neighborhood, which is immediately adjacent to the market. I'm glad this photo is up. Oh, it went away. Because it shows the building. It shows the Western Union. It shows the completely covering of that building in beer signs. And to me, this building doesn't say, "Welcome to our neighborhood, cute market. We're here to serve the neighborhood." It says, "Want some alcohol because you're drunk and want to drink some more? This is your place." And adding packaged liquor at this location, which has been a sore point in a neighborhood that's really trying to do its best to be a quality place for people to live, it's just not there. And maybe, you know, five years down the road, after the drunks have been cleared out of the parking lot, after that horrible advertising has been removed and something more inviting is in place, maybe it would be acceptable to have packaged liquor. But as it exists now, this is not the right location.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas.
Hi, Stephen Franklin, 556 Ellen Way, Las Vegas. I will give these guys credit. I think they are making an effort to clean this place up. I'm still opposed to a liquor license, a packaged liquor license at this location. I mean, there definitely is a fire going on in the area, and the fire is vagrants and drunks and drug addicts lumbering through the area. Ted Weens is very close to there. There's an alley that runs right behind Ted Weens. If I could have the overhead, I have some photographs that were taken recently, and this is the kind of stuff that we don't want to have more of, and that's more trash and more beer bottles and more liquor bottles in the area. This is the alley directly behind Ted Weens. This is the kind of activity that is very, very common in our area, and this was just taken within the past couple of weeks. This is right behind Ted Weens. You can see, if I zoom in here, there's fecal matter on the wall. You can see some toilet paper or some napkins there. It's just a mess back in there, broken glass in the alley. This is trash behind the professional commercial buildings that's directly across from Bell's Market. There's a corner, you can see beer bottle, beer bottle. And I don't want to, I don't want to invite Jack Daniels and Jose Cuervo to the party.
God, Mr. Franklin.
Additionally, you can see Metro here, behind the alley, an ambulance here picking up a guy. Here's a beer bottle here. Here's Bell's Market right there. You can see Bell's right there, beer bottle right there. Here's the professional commercial buildings that are directly across the street. Here is a house that is about a half a block east of this, of Bell's Market. And if we zoom into their corner, which is on Oki, beer bottle, beer bottle, another beer bottle up there. And again, just don't want to have more of this and then include hard liquor into the mix. Now, if you notice this picture, this is, this was taken clearly, very recently because if you look at the far, in the upper left-hand corner, you can see the signage for the, from the planning commission meeting posting the sign. And if you look on the bottom here...
Was that blood?
Vomit.
What?
Vomit.
Oh.
So, it's that kind of activity that is going to only increase if there is carry-out packaged liquor at this location. And, you know, again, it's just not conducive to downtown redevelopment.
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Did you already speak?
No.
Oh, sorry.
401 Arnold Street, Donald Hickey.
Okay.
I live in the Rancho Manor area, but of course, anybody who's from Las Vegas, has friends in there, I've been in and out of that neighborhood since the late '70s. Without John S. Park and the Hunt Ridge area, you do not have downtown redevelopment. It's the Keystone neighborhood for downtown. And I guess I would agree with the previous speaker. We don't oppose the idea there being a market there. I think it's what everybody's saying, but they do need to go back to the drawing board and open up something that's more in line and more conducive to what the neighborhood is about, and it's certainly not about a basic liquor store, not even close.
Right. Thank you very much.
All right.
If there's no one else to speak on this, we'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to the planning commission. Thank you.
Madam Chair, first point, just a clarification. The applicant was saying that he's only going to have minimal amount of liquor and it's going to be behind his gun-shielded cash register Plexiglas area, but he's going for a full liquor, well, not a full liquor license. Can you help me on the clarification?
He's going for... Packaged liquor, full packaged liquor.
Full packaged liquor, not just as an accessory, packaged, packaged use. So, first, I don't know why you went for what you're going for, but...
You know what? Only because of a total misunderstanding that, you know, the guy from the planning department called me over the phone and, oh, the gentleman from the planning department called me over the phone and totally caught me off-guard. I really didn't know what he was asking me. He asked me, "Are you, do you, are you adding it as an accessory or are you just, are you adding a liquor license?" And only because I misunderstood him, I told him, "I'm going for a liquor license." But our plans don't have no, in no way intend in putting liquor anywhere but behind the counter.
Excuse me.
So, maybe it would be better that...
That's your application, though, sir.
Yeah, I understand that, but on any of my application, I didn't, there was nothing that I wrote or anything that I checked that, that put me to apply for that full liquor other than the phone conversation I had with the gentleman from planning.
Madam Chair.
Mike Howe or something, I think Howe or, I mean, I, you know what? It was, like I said, it was only over the phone.
That's fine. You know, I've spoke to a lot of the residents from the neighborhood, and it's a very vocal neighborhood, Beverly Green, John S. Park, Hunt Ridge, and the, a lot of the neighbors said that they have appreciated you coming in and working on the building, trying to clean it up, but they don't feel that it's there just yet. And, you know, the windows are covered 100% in signs, where 25% is the maximum allowed. And I was in there the other day, and it looks like you still have a little ways to go. And if you can clean up the store and possibly have a neighborhood meeting and you can get all the neighbors on board, I could support this, but with the way it stands today, I can't support it. But I'll, that's all my comments I have for now.
Just a couple of comments. I mean, you know, just looking at your store, I mean, every sign in there is a, is some kind of light, whether it's Bud, Miller, or whatever. And so, you know, right there, it puts you at a disadvantage with this neighborhood. If I were you, I'd probably contact Ms. Joanelle Thomas before you leave here and Mr. Delacanakis and a few other folks over there that live in that area. And, you know, it's just, it's called simple doing some market research. I mean, you could take a notepad and a clipboard and walk through that neighborhood and knock on every door and say, "Hey, I own the store up there, and I'd like to know what type of products you want in my store to bring you there." You do that for about 60 days. You take all of your results and you tally them up, and if you've got, you know, 20 requests for special cheese or wine or a specialty item, then you begin to stock your store. Then you go back out in that neighborhood or go back to their Neighborhood Association meetings and let them know that you've got those products in there. Then what happens is the young lady that goes to the yogurt shop and now all of a sudden sudden needs to come in and use the ATM, she will be able to go in and come back out of the store and may have something to complement that ice cream with. So, it's not rocket science. It's just a matter of you getting off this old retail model of, you know, I make my money quick off a bottle or packaged liquor and sell a product. You're planning to be there over the long haul, correct?
Yes, definitely.
You're just not trying to come in, get what you can, shut it down and get out of here.
Not at all. We bought it, it was ready to shut down. We bought it and improved it and kept it open. We don't plan on going anywhere.
Yeah, so if you're gonna be a neighbor and you wanna get to know the neighbors, you want the neighbors to know them, walk the neighborhood, tell them who you are, take a clipboard, list what they want, come back with the product line, let them know you have it. Take all the beer advertising out of the window.
You know what?
It's cheap.
Exactly. And it was, it was a way for me to try to make the look a little better and it was free because the beer companies did it. And I do regret doing it and it's gonna come down. By tomorrow, those window coverings will be gone.
Thank you.
And we are in the process of bringing produce. Within 30 days, we will have a produce cooler in there with produce in the store.
Yep. Because if people can see in there and you've got the nice aisles and it's very attractive and I'm sure they'll come.
And we have attended a couple of neighborhood meetings with the Beverly Green Association and we are working with them and getting their support. And we have got some of their support already, so, but we are, we are definitely working with them and we plan to work with them more in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Farlow made a comment. Now, do you have the little glass thing with the roses in there?
Not at all, man. We haven't...
Ever had them in there?
Never, ever, ever, not once, not one day, never.
Okay. I'm coming in there in the middle of the night. I'm just letting you know.
And we have, and we have built, we have built a great relationship with Metro over there. I have a lot of guys that come in. We keep the, you know, clean restrooms for them to come in and use the restrooms whenever they need to. When they're in the area, they come, check on us, hang out. I worked in the Bolden Command area at my father's store for eight years. I built a great relationship with Metro over there. I've been, I've started to do the same thing with the DTAC Command, with the Downtown Area Command. And we really do work close with Metro. We, you know, we've joined the program, the COP program with Metro where they come. You know, we have the NRS codes on the building. We have signs posting that everything is under surveillance to keep that negative stuff away, you know. We have done, you know, and we're working in that direction, in the right direction.
Thank you, sir. I think Commissioner Truistell wanted to say something.
Yeah. I've been to the Beverly Green meetings when you were there and presented and the pitch that was given was, "We're gonna bring produce. We're gonna be your neighborhood market." And the first thing I see come through here is liquor sales. And they can be behind the counter all you want, but once you sell it, it's out on the street. And if we give you a full liquor, ability to sell packaged liquor from that location, we have a Arco right next door, we have a 7-Eleven right there. This isn't gonna see support. You have beer and wine sales now and one of the people that came up here says that you, you know, sell some craft beers and you do some things like that. That's, that's fine. You have those entitlements. And for you to make an application for liquor and then say, "Well, staff made me do it," or "They answered their question wrong," is pretty disingenuous here.
No, I'm not...
I mean, no, let me finish this. If you wanna run a convenience store in a market there, God love you, I'm happy you're investing in that neighborhood. If you, if you wanna sell liquor and run a liquor store next to the strip club and neck, you know, where half the people in this town go to that ice cream, you know, Lovitz, focus on your business, not just the liquor so you can, you know, attract this mobile community that's downtown that isn't making an investment in their homes. So, you know, if we're ready for a motion, I'm more than willing to make one.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, I move that this, we deny this, follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Please vote. Motion is to deny.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, this item is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
And may I just say one more thing to you guys before you leave? When you have an outstanding commissioner of your ward like Trinity and you have these great neighborhoods out here, you're, and you're taking so much from our community and making a ton of money, you need to do a Great Saturday, get everybody together and clean that neighborhood up and make it something that you're really proud of because that place, you have so much support that all you need to do is organize something once every six months and it would really put you on the map and good standing with not only this commission but the whole city. And I'd really love to see you join with these guys because you've got everything going for you, you just need to organize it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to say that. Moving on to number 46, applicant is Seema Mizrachi, owner King George LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed secondhand dealer at 1208 East Charleston Boulevard. Staff is recommending approval. Staff.
Chair Quinn, this is a request for special use permit for secondhand dealer use to display used home decor items for sale on what was previously a theater. Building permits and a certificate of occupancy will be required prior to establishment of this use within the existing vacant building. No building or site improvements are proposed as part of this request. A secondhand dealer use is permitted within the CT General Commercial Zoning District with the approval of a special use permit. The proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Seema Mizrachi, 1200 East Charleston Boulevard. I agree with staff recommendations and conditions set forth for SUP 43985. I also agree with staff recommendations for 43987. However, I request to delete the condition...
Excuse me, we're just doing the first one.
Okay, so if they're gonna be separate then...
43985, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, I agree. I wanna address some of the concerns I heard regarding the Hunt Ridge Theater being up for the secondhand dealer. I'm no, in no way trying to diminish...
Is that the next one?
The...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is the, okay.
Okay.
I'm not trying to diminish any historical significance of the theater. It's been vacant. I would love to have the ability to open the doors, obtain the certificate of occupancy, get the building up to code so that we can make some sort of income. The economy has affected my family as well. And we can't necessarily afford to do the improvements we had intended on doing. I love the theater. I was born and raised in Las Vegas and I understand the significance of the building. If, if we're not able to make any income, we're not able to make any improvements going forward. So, with the secondhand dealer, I do have a lot of inventory already available to put in. We are thinking some jewelry. And there was a misconception that it's a pawn shop. It's definitely not. I would like to do some antique furniture, things that my father has actually collected being a resident of Las Vegas for 40-plus years and having used a new furniture business in the past. There are remaining items, some items that I actually use to decorate my own home, mid-century modern pieces, things that look good. I don't want to diminish the look of the neighborhood. I wanna keep it clean. You know, we're trying to cover up the graffiti as soon as we see it and that would be something that would just be expounded if we're allowed to have a business from there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Seema.
Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion? I think that one item's gonna bleed over into the other just because they are right next to each other. You may wanna go ahead and call that, that item, the second item or second, just so that you won't have to do two hearings separately.
Okay. So, then we're gonna let number 47 be a companion item? Okay.
We'll vote separately on them.
We'll vote separately, but it'll be...
But they're gonna bleed over into one another.
So, I'm gonna also read number 47, SUP 43987. The applicant is also Seema Mizrachi, owner King George LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for proposed secondhand dealer at 1200 East Charleston Boulevard and 1125 South Maryland Parkway. Staff is recommending approval. And again, staff, please.
Chair Quinn, this is a request for special use permit to add a secondhand dealer use to an existing retail establishment. No building or site improvements are proposed as part of the request. The secondhand dealer use is permitted within the CT General Commercial Zoning District with the approval of a special use permit. And the proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is harmonious and compatible with surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication.
Thank you. Ms. Seema?
Okay, so I also agree with the staff recommendation for approval on this special use permit, with exception to the condition of consolidating the existing lots parcels. They are separate loans, so we do wanna keep the two separate lot numbers for that portion.
So, you agree with all staff's conditions?
It's, yeah, just that one condition to have a mapping action to consolidate the parcels. I just wanna keep the parcels the way they are.
Okay. So, now we're gonna open up to public comment. And remember, we have two microphones and we wanna move it along. So, again, don't repeat what somebody else has said. Let's all have clear thoughts and be courteous of each other, please.
Madam Chair, just for, just for the clerk, we'll just incorporate both of these transcripts on the both, on both items. It's gonna be hard to separate them, so...
Mr. Farlow?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I oppose this. The reason for it is this. Some years ago, the city and Councilman Reese jumped through all kinds of hoops, walked the extra 10 miles to these, and we were supposed to get that old bank and the post office and the Hunt Ridge was all gonna be fixed up, gonna put second floors in the thing, they were gonna put a second story on the face, everything. Got it all sorted out. The man promised us, promised us, that if we give him this, that if we, that if we went through this, that he was gonna do it and he had the money and all that. Where is it? Where is it? It's another lie. If we don't, if we just keep giving these people the special use permit or kicking the can down the road, we will never see this thing restored. The other thing I have to staff, does the Redevelopment Agency, do they still owe us money on that roof on that? Does anybody know? The Redevelopment Agency is the one that put that roof on that thing after the last one fell in. I think they still owe us money on that thing. Anyway, we're involved in this one way or another.
Good evening, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Kathleen Carr. I live at 1208 Norman Avenue. So, I live directly south of the Hunt Ridge Theater. If I can have the overhead there, I don't know if it's up or not, but I wanna make sure that you guys know that we didn't receive any notice on this. Everybody that we polled in the neighborhood, nobody received a notice. So, actually, people that are here are here of their own volition and not because they received a notice just in case, you know, anyway, I'll move on. My husband and I both work for a small business and I, I want the Mizraachis to know that we appreciate how difficult it can be to run a small business in today's economy. We truly appreciate that and we sympathize with that. However, the fact remains that there's basic code that is not being observed over there. Approximately 10 years ago, the neighborhood rallied behind the Mizraachis for a zoning change in exchange for them to paint some walls on the west side of the building, some plywood on the west side of the building. That was never done. It was just, it's just a reminder of the amount of respect they have for us as neighbors. And I'm not, I don't wanna be combative, but I wanna make this really clear and show that historically, things that are promised by them are not done. And so, we need you to say no at this point until they do these things. Picture number one here is actually, it's, there's already a used furniture store there in case you didn't know. There already is a used furniture store there. You'll see that the furniture that's displayed there is most definitely used. And it's not of the nice quality that any of us would put in our mid-century modern homes or a vintage home there in Vegas. So, let me see, I don't wanna lose my spot here. Temporary signage is already in place there. I think that's also against code and that's a pitiful representation of Uncle Sam, in my opinion. This is the door to 1200 East Charleston, which is actually where the Biggs Furniture Store is. It's a glass door. My understanding is that glass is not to be covered with plywood in an occupied building. Nonetheless, that is the case on that door. This is the thing that, it almost, it almost chokes me up, to be honest with you. These, this is the plywood right here that was promised to be painted and never has been. This is where the building was hit by a car. And those things sit there in disrepair and it's perplexing to me because the Mizrachi family actually owns a stucco company. And so, I don't really feel that there's any excuse at this stage for not making those repairs to that building. And I, I didn't use the B-word until one of you wrote me back and used it. And it's, it's sad to say that this beautiful historic building, which should be a treasure and the gateway to vintage neighborhoods, now sits in blight on that corner. And I'm asking that you guys not consider doing anything there until that is taken care of. Just to add to my comments, this is a copy from the Secretary of State's office. The LLC that's asking for the use permit is actually in default today. They don't have a business license in the state of Nevada. They haven't paid their dues for the LLC. So, that's it. That's the end of my comments. It's a super emotional and passionate issue for myself. My family's here. It's taking a lot for me to be here. The one other thing I do wanna add is that I really, really hope that at some point the Mizraachis can actually make some money, get a return on their investment. I'd like to see that. That would be a win for all of us, a fabulous win for all of us. And I think that it's gonna take you guys and us and them and maybe the mayor and whoever else it takes. I'm willing to go to the table. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to facilitate something that's good and right for that corner, but only after that corner is cleaned up and is no longer in blight condition. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carr.
Good evening, Melissa Clary, 1400 Francis Avenue, just south of the applicant's site. During the nearly 50 years of its operation, the Hunt Ridge has hosted many famous personalities. In March of 1947, Abbott and Costello appeared live on the Hunt Ridge stage to present their new movie, Buck Privates Come Home. In the 1950s, such artists as Frank Sinatra, Judy Garland, Jerry Lewis, Marlene Dietrich, and Vincent Price appeared at the Hunt Ridge in promotions for their latest movies. The Hunt Ridge Theater, along with the Fremont Theater, was host to the world premiere of The Las Vegas Story, in which all of the major actors in the picture were in attendance. This is an excerpt from the site's registration form on the National Register of Historic Places. It gives a mere glimpse of the site's significance and prominence in our city's history. This prime real estate corner serves as a gateway into several of the city's most mature residential communities, including the historic John S. Park, Beverly Green, South Ridge, West Hunt Ridge, and Hunt Ridge neighborhoods. The Hunt Ridge Theater site is included in the Hunt Ridge Neighborhood Association, of which I serve as president and community organizer. While I do not represent the entire community today because we have not had a vote on this particular SUP, several residents have stated to me that they feel King George LLC has not been a good neighbor and has not been willing to address residents' concerns related to the poor building aesthetics, which you have seen in some of these pictures. The same business has a great-looking facility on Sunset and Henderson. The same business has a great-looking facility on Sunset and Henderson. I don't know why the city of Las Vegas does not request site improvements to this Charleston site. Additionally, the expanded secondhand dealer use detracts from the neighbors, the neighborhood's greater needs for groceries and other services. No business plan indicating consumer demand stats for used furniture in this area has surfaced by the applicant in this proposal. To meet city goals for achieving a vibrant urban fabric and a more sustainable, livable neighborhood, direct quotes from the city's master plan, I respectfully request that this commission deny the special use permit for a secondhand dealer use. If a denial will not be entertained, a resolution is to insert stronger language and conditions regarding the use of the property. In recognition of the site's significance and the neighborhood namesake, the city should enforce the following conditions contingent on the applicant's pursuit of building permits: A cohesive exterior aesthetic, including paint and building materials, without the existing crumbling concrete debris and plywood coverings on both buildings; Exterior improvements should also be compatible with the historic architecture; Parking lot improvements to comply with current city standards for landscaping, as the site is a large asphalt heat sink in a heavily traversed pedestrian area; Restricted loading and unloading areas for large trucks and trailers on the property; No furniture or mattresses should be displayed outside the building or in the parking lot like they were today when I got home from work; No furniture or mattresses, excuse me, and an approved location for reviewed and approved signage for both buildings when the existing, with the existing painted, handwritten, and temporary pennant signage to remove from 1200 Charleston. Finally, I would like to have a city contact for enforcing the site's current and potential future violation, future violations of permits and licenses, as well as a city contact for convening a possible planning overlay for the Charleston corridor. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. I just want to remind you that we're going to keep it now at three minutes, because it's getting late and I'm not doing my job, so, name and address for the record, and if you don't have something different to say, we understand the point, so, go.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Brian Paco Alvarez. I live at 801 Las Vegas Boulevard South. I had the pleasure of meeting with Seema's brother several years ago in regards to an adaptive reuse of the Hunt Ridge Theater. The plan was wonderful. All of us who got involved in Save the Hunt Ridge project several years ago, we fell in love with the adaptive reuse. Obviously, it wouldn't been, it would not have been a theater again, but it would have been a commercial use with a pad on the corner, with a cafe, and then all of the architecture of all three buildings would be tied together in honor of the streamlined, modern architecture of the theater itself. Unfortunately, no less than a few weeks after Eli sat down with us, the economy collapsed in the United States, and we kind of just, we said, okay, we gave him the benefit of the doubt, we completely understand the situation. I'm not necessarily opposed to this project, as long as the Mizraachi family sit down with the neighborhood, like Eli did several years ago, and engage them, and at least try to bring the aesthetic of the building up to what it originally looked like when it was first built, at least paint the building all one consistent color, finish painting the tower. Sadly, if you could see on the photo here, the tower's two-thirds painted up, and then it's left white on the top with the Hunt Ridge fading. It's about communication, especially for a historic building, one of the few theaters in the United States that was built during World War II. Also, there's a covenant on the building that they can't do anything with the building, tear it down because of the historic nature of this building. They have received, prior to the Mizraachis purchasing this building, they did receive close to a million dollars in state historic preservation funds to keep the building up. When the building was sold, the Mizraachis knew that this covenant was in place, and so it's really important for the neighbors and the owners to sit down together and come up with a plan, at least for the aesthetic of the building, especially at a time when downtown is going through a renaissance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Eric Holler, 6358 West Halle. I just wanted to submit additional photos as well. I thought they were important to note. Essentially, the fact, can you see that?
We can see it.
Okay. I just want to identify the fact that this building is an eyesore to downtown. Half-covered graffiti in all aspects, as well as areas of disrepair, unrepaired fences, boarded-up doors, trash on the premises, additional trash from vagrants. Predominantly, this is the biggest eyesore of them all. I find it ironic that the actual place of business that they are promoting, they have an outstanding hole that's not been addressed for months, and above all that, what I find most sad and tragic is when the taggers are requesting to clean up the mess, something has gone on too far. With all that said, I did want to also address, despite the historical reference, this location was also one of the first non-segregated theaters in Las Vegas, which is an important cultural fact as well. There are plans currently being drafted to revitalize that location. Hopefully, we can sit down with the owners. I myself am attempting to bring music back to that community, to be a social hub for downtown, to tie in the arts in downtown districts, so I'm hoping that will take place. Despite all the relevance and those acts to be made, I believe it to be an issue that we, I guess my idea is that we not accept this so willy-nilly on something that's of such great importance. It's a building that's been in our downtown, it's been an anchor spot for a long time, and I believe that we can only know where to go by remembering where we have been, and music is a critical aspect to that, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Holler, could you please give those photographs to the clerk?
Definitely.
Put them in the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holler, for the work you did on that.
Lance Kirk, 1720 South 15th Street, 89104. I am not opposed necessarily to the Mizraachis having a business, running a furniture, they've been there for a while, although I echo what many people said tonight, that I don't think they're a good tenant of the community, as evidenced tonight with the way they upkeep the building. So, I'm happy to hear that there's going to be other stipulations that come in future meetings about conditions for the site and improvements and things like that, but what I am opposed to and hope that there can be conditions, perhaps I recommend conditions tonight from the commission, that if they move forward with this, that they are not allowed to even get close to becoming a pawn shop. That furniture is what they do, let's keep that. Let's not, from what I understand, what I read on some of the paperwork for this, doing my research, is the secondhand store can offer guns. I saw jewelry, I saw guns, I saw clothing, I saw other things beyond the furniture that they're known for now, so I definitely don't want a pawn shop in the neighborhood like that, especially with guns. We have plenty of them around the neighborhood. When I moved to my home in 2008, I was moved, I was moving and got robbed, and my items were found in a pawn shop on Charleston within fifteen minutes. So, we don't need these things to keep coming, so a pawn shop is not welcome at the Hunt Ridge site at all, so I would hope for conditions.
The pawn shop wasn't one of them, so we need to stay with the point.
Just the breadth of what the secondhand store offers more than furniture, and I think you're granting them tonight, if you grant this, that they can do more than just furniture, so I would ask that you have conditions on anything moving forward, if it gets approved, that they can only sell the furniture, or they have to have, you know, some kind of stipulation like that.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Alex White. My address is 3900 Budlong Avenue. I have noticed that there has been an awful lot of passion with the responses as far as the Hunt Ridge Theater is concerned, and I share a bit of that passion, but more importantly, I feel the thing that everyone has said is that they are not necessarily opposed to the current owners doing something with the property, just that they would like something done with the property, and something that I feel is being heard and sort of filtered out is the concept that people still want something creative to happen with the property. And if this furniture store is something that is going to be a long-term project, then you've essentially turned a theater into a retail outlet, and while that is acceptable, it is not necessarily acceptable for our neighborhood, for our town, for the only place that we have that we can turn into something more creative and more productive than what it currently is, and I've heard and I've spoken with plenty of people who have put that concept out there, and while communicating together is something that we all need to do and basically go for, something that has brought us together is a negative impact on something that we all are looking to turn into a beautiful, wonderful project, and whether the property becomes a retail store in the short term, I don't think is something that anyone here is very worried about. It's the long-term of the building, it's where it goes from here. If it becomes a secondhand store, what stops it from becoming a Rite Aid next week, or whenever the secondhand store doesn't do well. So, I don't really have a denial or an approval on this, I just am feeling a lot of trepidation.
Thank you very much, Mrs. White.
Thank you.
Hi, Joelle Thomas, 1509 South Fifth Place, Vice President of the Johnus Park Neighborhood. Our neighborhood has also not had a meeting regarding this issue. We would very much welcome a meeting, as I know the other adjoining neighborhoods would as well, in that we have high hopes for this property, we would love to see this be the beacon of the community, that it's capable of being. The use that's being proposed is not the best use for this property. In addition, I concur in the other statements that have been made in opposition. I would hope that we could sit down and try to work out something better.
Ms. Thomas, were you notified about this?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Thank you.
I mean, not formally.
No. Okay, thank you very much. Ma'am?
Jennifer Quintry, 706 Bonita. Do you know, here's the thing, this family purchased a historic building in our neighborhood, and they've had offers to sell it, so I don't, I don't think there's any reason for us to give them a special use permit. If it's something in the neighborhood that we need, that we want, it should be so, or sell the property if there's not something, you know, readily available that you need to do. I just, I don't see the need to change this use. There's a lot of talk about the theater, and we all know that that, you know, if you want to put up five million dollars to bring this building up to code, to make it a theater, by all means, I'm sure that this family would sell it to you. However, I just know in the past few years, they've had offers to sell the building that they've rejected, so let's not make this family just wait out the period of time in which the historic preservation limits on them are going to be, you know, lifted at some point. Let's really hold the property owners to do something creative with the building, and there are ways to take old buildings inexpensively and make them into something new. We're in a new time, we're in a new economy, and I think I have a little bit of experience with doing so, so you just have to think differently, and we should really, as a neighborhood, you know, let this family know that it's not okay to just stand up here and to ask for a special use permit. Do something that is already acceptable with this property, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your time, sir.
Donald Hickey, 401 Arnold Street, and 89106 Rancho Manor area. I think, being a native Lasvegan and seeing the progress of these neighborhoods in and around the Hunt Ridge, this unfortunately remains sort of a lingering punch in the nose for downtown redevelopment that's gone on, you know, possibly since the mid to late nineties, and it's been an issue ever since I've been a cognizant adult of anything going on downtown. I would ask the commission and also the city council to take that into consideration. My biggest issue was with staff, to say that it's harmonious with the neighborhood. I think Commissioner Goines put it best, is that maybe not only should the Mizraachis do some market research, but staff should also do some market research to know what's harmonious with the neighborhood. You know, that is a neighborhood that I've been very cognizant of since I was a small child, and I've been, I saw Star Wars at the Hunt Ridge, I saw Sonic Youth at the Hunt Ridge, you know, and I'm aware, I'm aware that Frank Sinatra used to hang out at the Hunt Ridge, you know. It's kind of like Hoover Dam, you wouldn't, you wouldn't just make a flippant decision on it, and the other issue I have is that I'm worried that if you do, you might set up the Mizraachis to fail on, in the future, if they're not given the right stipulations to go on with it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hickey. Sir?
My name's Hart, H-A-R-T, my last name is Fleischhauer, F-L-E-I-S-C-H-H-A-U-E-R. I spell it for a reason. I live at 1816 South 9th Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89104. When I try to tell my historic neighborhood and how proud I am of my historic neighborhood to people, I tell them about things like the Hunt Ridge Theater, and the reply I get back from people is, "Oh, you mean the ugly old furniture store with the big red letters on it?" Okay? I'm really proud of my historic neighborhood, and I don't want to see this become a secondhand store. If it's just secondhand furniture, that wouldn't be quite so bad, but the truth is, probably a couple hundred yards away from it, we have a Sabers in the shopping center that's right across the street, right across from Maryland. There is a pawn shop, which is almost directly across the street from Charleston, so there's plenty of secondhand stores around. If you can't make the Hunt Ridge Theater, we can't somehow find a way to make the Hunt Ridge Theater back into a theater, which I understand would be very difficult, at least let it be something that the neighborhood can be proud of, okay? An art museum, an art studio, you know, something that we can be proud of, a museum, not a secondhand furniture store, not a secondhand store. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much, for your time. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Gina Coronto. I live at 1200 Darmak. I own a business downtown as well. I wasn't going to say anything, I was just coming really for moral support, I'm not a great public speaker, I tend to speak more, not so logically, but more emotionally, especially with things like this.
That's fine, just get it out.
But...
You can do it.
The Hunt Ridge has been sort of a thorn in everyone's side for years, since it's been laying dormant, and we didn't understand what was going on with it. Thousands of us grew up in this place, we've made long-lasting friends in this place that we're still friends with today. There may be only a few of us here, but there are thousands of people just like me, my age, you know, and younger and older, that don't want to see this place become a store of any kind.
Right.
I mean, we don't, like I said, I own a business, I don't want to see anybody struggle. I would love to see that family make money and have a beautiful business in that place. I agree with what a lot of everyone else said, it should be something in a creative light, and I think that they're just waiting it out. I don't understand how it was, how we were able to make this a landmark and keep it a landmark, and go through all of that trouble to make a historical landmark, just so that somebody personal can buy it and let it rot on that corner, and every time we drive down that corner, we see this building getting worse and worse and worse. The city, I mean, you guys made this a historical landmark, so we can watch it rot, I don't understand it. I don't understand it, and it's literally being, it's being dilapidating right in front of our eyes, under the ownership of these people. They don't care about it, and I, if there's anything that you can do, I really, I really implore you to do something.
Thank you so much for your time.
Hello, thank you for your patience. My name is Katie Blevins, I live at 1335 South 11th Street. I am a native Nevadan. There's not many places I can take my children to show where I've been or where I've been, because we implode everything. I can't take them downtown to show them that little stone house that was really cute downtown. I can't take them to that. If I want to take them somewhere, oh, it used to be like this, it was like that, or I go through old photos that my mom took. It'd be really nice if we could restore it, I could have my children, because I, what we do, we could walk, we could walk there, we could walk to the movies. Even if it was a community center, where I could take my kids, and I could, they could volunteer there. I'm willing to... I'm willing to sun my family up, and I thank God for all these young families that have moved into our neighborhood and have, have just respected so much, and it brings, you know, good stewardship. And if that's what is showing my children, just, you know, go, do what you gotta do. Even David and Goliath, you know, that's what we need. We need you guys to back us up. We're not asking for much. We're just, you know, give me someplace I could take my children, and they can take their children, or I could take my grandchildren, and show them, this is what we have. This is all we have left that we consider, that if we could just bring this to the community. Like I said, if you drive through that, if you drive through that neighborhood, ride your bicycles through our neighborhood. If you want to take your children or your grandkids on a nice bicycle ride, come through our neighborhood. It's safe. It's nice. It's, you see the old, the old style, and that's what we're looking for you guys to keep. Thank you for your patience and sorry for keeping her so long.
Thank you so much for your input. We appreciate it. Mr. Franklin?
Hi, Stephen Franklin, 556 Ellen Way. These guys have been deplorable stewards of this property from the day that they've owned this. They have gotten variances, and they have gotten SGP's passed, in, in, in the past. They've done nothing to improve the property whatsoever. They have been a continual black eye in the neighborhood. This is a building that is on the National Historic Register, and it's an absolute disgrace how they have treated that building since the day that they've owned that property. They have just presented a string of lies to us, and I have never drunk the Kool-Aid, and I hope that you guys are done drinking the Kool-Aid too. In my opinion, they're just waiting for that, for that National Historic Register to expire in 2017 so that they can do whatever they want with that property. In the meantime, it continues to go downhill and downhill. The architects and the craftsmen that, that built that building, and the theater goers that went to that building whenever it was in its heyday would be crying right now if they saw that this was proposed to be a used furniture store and used whatever, including guns, according to what I understand as well. They bought a theater, and if they want to make some money, they, and, and wanted to do a, a used furniture shop, they should have bought something where the permits and they didn't need any SGP's for, for a used furniture shop or for a resale shop of any sort. If they bought a theater on a National Historic Register, they should have treated it like that, and they have not. That's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Franklin. We appreciate it. So there's no one else here to speak on this? We're gonna close the public comment?
Do I have a chance to speak again?
Yes.
Okay. Can I do that now?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna kind of wind it up though, so...
Right. But I just want to address some of the issues and concerns that they have. We also have, I'm working on actually fixing up a building in the Arts District, so I am involved with the downtown community. I actually met Paco a few months ago at First Friday and let him know, and I am looking for tenants. We have the electrical permits for that type of stuff. So they don't know me. They know other Mizrahi's. They don't know... Biggs Furniture is not going to be there any longer. If I would be the business owner, it would be a completely separate business. On the business license, I did state no guns. I didn't put guns on there. I, I put other things, because I know that is allowed for a secondhand dealer. We do not own a stucco company, as was falsely stated earlier. I believe my father's late brother owns a stucco company, who is a Mizrahi also in town. And yeah, it's completely separate from Biggs, as I stated. Those things, some of the photos that they were showing with the rubble that was taken, that was caused by the wall coming down that separated the original furniture store from the Huntridge before it was purchased, from, friends of the Huntridge. It has been fixed. You can actually see new photos. The news channels and stations were... Right, it was just fixed two days ago.
May I withdraw your comments to the chair?
Sorry, sorry. If you, if you go, if you go to the Huntridge today, right now, yesterday, it's, it's been repaired. So we are making moves and steps in the right direction. I understand that, you know, they don't want to see a furniture store there forever. It's a stepping stone. It is under the condition that it would go into review in two years. If I have done it a disservice, then, you know, in two years' time, please let me know, and we can figure out something else to do with the building. I actually just got married recently, and I wanted to get married at the Huntridge. It's very sentimental to me, the state that it's in, and with the finances, we just couldn't afford to, to have the wedding there. But a banquet hall is something that is in the talks as well for the future, so that residents who do have this love can rent out the space for their own celebrations or whatever they...
Right now, we're talking about the secondhand store, so we can't talk about the...
For the two years, okay, so, sorry, just so that the community knows that I'm not trying to just have a used furniture shop in there.
Okay. So, thank you so much.
Just a question, because they are two separate. I know they're going to be voted on separately. That is a historic building, but the front one is in use now as a furniture store. So I'm just requesting that you take that into...
Separate them, right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and we're gonna close the public hearing now, and we're gonna open it up to the commissioners, and we're gonna start.
Yeah, let me take a shot since...
Mr. Trobridge?
I'll let you know what my thoughts are on the matter. I was very active in the Save the Huntridge project many, many years ago, and worked with different people at different times over trying to get the renovation of the Huntridge Theater and, and the proposal that came forward, oh, forty-five years ago or so, where they were going to put a business on the corner, and they were going to do this, that, and the other, and have all kinds of nice little boutiquey-type shops in there, and it was, sounded encouraging. Even though that wasn't the intent when it was identified as a historical register, you know, and, and there was over a million dollars worth of tax dollars invested in that project. Since then, there's been additional tax dollars invested in the project. Our local experience with the Kyle Ranch shows us that if you ignore a building long enough, it will just fall apart. And if the rate we're going, only in, you're getting, you're getting $200,000 worth of benefit a year by doing nothing. Several years ago, and it's back to maybe five years, had to come forward and get an approval to let an antenna be on the back of the lot there. Part of the justification was that the revenue that comes from that antenna, which was relatively significant, was going to be to use, be used to offset the repairs that were necessary. I see the antennas, but that's all. You know, I think that the continued neglecting the piece of property is achieving, I'll, I'll say it, and you don't have to agree with it, the intent of letting the thing just deteriorate where in, in five more quick years, it'll just fall down. A good windstorm will take it down. You know, and so I, I don't think that the development of a secondhand store in the neighborhood moves that historically registered building in the right direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Trobridge. Commissioner Truesdale, did you want to say something?
It's unfortunate you're here. We've had so many applications brought forward by your family with regards to this and by the previous owners, and it seems the only things that are consistent is the furniture store on this corner and the non-appropriate signage. The cell tower is there, the billboard on the other end. And yet, as we've gone through this, and I've had this conversation with your brother, I believe, and, and even your father years ago, this, this will fall down before it can be built on, you know. And I understand the economy affects everybody, and it's not just good enough to say, well, the city will find money and fix it. That's not a realistic approach. You know, I, I doubt all the neighbors want to put a big special improvement district together and tax themselves more money to put money, more money into this. It just... This will be furthering that delay and furthering that decay of the building. And I think everybody's voiced their concerns. I think if we don't approve this, you're probably not going to get anything done there anyway. If we do approve this, it probably isn't going to get done anyway. And at the end of the day, it is my honest belief that this tower won't be there. And the tower is really the historical element. The rest of the, is a lot of nice memories that we all went to the theater there and went to concerts there, and, you know. It's just, they're great memories, and it's great memories of a, of a historic building. But that building doesn't exist today. The only thing that's left that has any real iconic value is the tower, the sign piece that's part of it. And I venture to say the, the concept of the secondhand store is going to generate enough revenue for your family to put the dollars into maintaining that tower and keeping it. So it, it sounds terrible, but if the end result is this blighted corner will be, will fall down, and the city will put a lien against it to clean it up, and... But maybe at that point, we might have something happen in that area that's good for the neighborhood. But as we sit today, I think we would be doing you a huge disservice to approve this today, because I don't believe the code, I think it's going to cost you more than you, than realistic numbers just to make this a usable furniture store, unless it's going to be plywooded sides and some of the level that we see with Biggs today. And so, you know, I'll, I'll go along with the neighborhood in saying, let's don't approve this and let the environment take its, its toll on this building. But at least we'll be able to start something and, and give back to that neighborhood, start seeing something happen there. Now, in those words, it doesn't sound so good, does it? I like the tower. I think it should stay. But it's not going to stay at the, at the, with a secondhand furniture store at the base of it.
It's not going to stay vacant either. I mean, so, I mean, if we're not allowed to do anything, it's just difficult for us to find something. I just have the inventory for this now, so...
I know. And it, and it, it becomes this today, and it becomes something else tomorrow. But at the end of the day, it's going to take resources greater than are out there today to re-improve this whole property. So we're kidding ourselves if we're going to do some, some half-hearted things. I've, I've supported some of the uses that your family's brought forward that haven't gone forward. I've objected to a lot of things. I've, I've stood up here and put endless conditions and to try and save this tower. And no matter what we do, the economy is probably going to do more to, to deteriorate that project further.
If I don't have incentive to bring it up to code and get the, the occupancy, certificate of occupancy, then my family's not going to back me. This is sort of like my effort to try and get them to see that I can make money out of here and that we can get it up to code. So, I mean, honestly, if, if that's your feeling, I know that...
No, I mean, it's, it's, it's a real concern, and it's a reality. Because I think it's going to take a monumental effort from a whole lot of people to save that tower. And that... And it's not people wanting it saved and putting the price tag on you. I'm not saying your family's done anything wrong. The economy is what it is. But there's been a lot of money already invested from state dollars. The historical registry is what it is. But the fact is, if, if this community wants to save the Huntridge Tower and the sign, and that's really about all that, that probably can be structurally saved and, and be, keep the icon there, it is going to take a lot broader approach than what you've got before us tonight. And even what the neighbors, because there isn't a pot of funds out there where somebody says, "Here, please, save this tower." If that was out there, people would have done it already. We, we don't jump on and spend money in this community like that. The city developed the, the Fifth Street School. They own the asset. They, they could do those things with grants. The Neon Museum has taken a lot of effort to, to wind its way through it. A lot of historic buildings, the old Mesquite Club, the West Las Vegas, or not West Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Elementary School that's off of Washington. Those are things that the community owned the asset. You own the asset. The community here isn't going to pay you a premium for your property just to save the tower. So it's, it's really, I think we need to focus on the fact that we not, we as a community may not be able to save that tower. And I just can't sit here tonight and support the secondhand dealership, because I, that isn't going to save the tower either. I don't believe that in my heart. And like I say, I've had a lot of conversations with your brother and your father, and I commend you for all the effort you've put into this, but it just, it's, it's not the right thing in the right place. So that's my concerns about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Truesdale. Did you want to say anything, Commissioner Moody, sir?
Yeah, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have to say this. Maybe it's because I'm getting tired, but I keep thinking about 1980. I'm 15 years old and watch the movie Xanadu. And you remember that? This beautiful Art Deco building that was restored to its grandeur? And, you know, Olivia Newton-John on roller skates to a teenage boy. What gets better than that? But we have neighbors here that are passionate about this place, and I, I have to agree with my fellow commissioners that allowing, allowing what's been proposed is just going to, it's going to seal the deal on this continuing to go downhill. And someone needs to come along that, with a vision that can save this place and do something great and take it back to what it used to be. So unfortunately, you won't have my support on this tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. Commissioner Goines?
Just real quickly, I know you mentioned an incentive and a plan, and I'm kind of passionate neighborhood too. I went to school at Bishop Gorman there, and actually, I laugh now, because we used to use that alley when I was on the wrestling team, and Coach Ward had us run from Gorman to Cashman Field. We used to park the Volkswagen in the alley in the morning. So when wrestling practice came at 2:30, we'd run halfway down, get the Volkswagen, and drive it down to Cashman Field. That was me and Dick Romeo and Tim Cashman, a few other, few other Gorman graduates. But, you know, it's, it's kind of simple. I hear you talking about it. I hear your passion. You know, but when I walk outside my house and walk around, take a look at it, I see a piece of chipped stucco or something, I get it fixed. I don't see how you can go there every day and look at that property and not do anything to it. There's some simple, quick fixes that, that, that don't take a lot of money, you know, that, that you could make an immediate impact, I think, which would give the neighbor some semblance that you care. But when it just sits there and deteriorates and deteriorates, it gives appearance that you don't care, but then you, or maybe representatives of the families, keep coming in, trying to get special use permits to do this or to do that. And then you say, in order for us to get the building up and running, we have to have this. But no, it's not. Community effort. I think if you saw some incentive to go out there and clean it up, you may get a neighborhood, like Commissioner Chairwoman Quinn mentioned with the other store. You know, once or twice a quarter, you'd get everybody together in the parking lot, and I'm sure the neighbors would come and get the building back to where it is. I don't think you're going to see anything similar to like the park that was gated off for a number of years to protect it. It was a little over $3 million put into that park. But I mean, you've got to take a step forward. You know, and we talk about money, money, and I know you said you got married, and I have a daughter, and I understand it. But, you know, I almost want to ask you, how much did the wedding cost?
$300 at the Cosmopolitan.
You know, and so, but I, I, that should have been, that wedding reception probably should have been the kickoff to getting that whole thing around to a, to a banquet hall. And so... But, but, but my, my point is, make an attempt. Those plywood pictures that the, the young lady showed, and I think I was the one who responded to your email and told you to bring those down here tonight. But, you know, putting a coat of paint, getting the plywood, getting the couch and stuff off, it, it looks like a blight. I mean, I live in a cul-de-sac, and when I come out and sweep the front of my house, I sweep Barney's house, I sweep Paul's house, I sweep everybody's house... I sweep Barney's house, I sweep Paul's house, I sweep everybody's house in the cul-de-sac because it's the right thing to do to preserve the neighborhood.
Madam Chair. First question is, who, who removed the special use permit sign from your property and hid it behind the bars right next to your front door?
That I'm not aware of.
It, it had to have been somebody with The Hunt Ridge because nobody else would have had access to that. So while I was driving around last night, I seen that special use permitted, permit sign stuffed behind a whole bunch of stuff. And we like to keep that up so all the neighbors in the neighborhoods can be informed. Fortunately, we're in the John S. Park, Beverly Green, Hunt Ridge neighborhood. These people don't need a sign. They know what's going on. So I, I had a lot of emails and phone calls from the neighbors. And just for point of clarification, there's SDR and then there's a special use permit. And typically on a SDR, we can assign or make conditions to paint the building and to put in parking lot trees and to make all these improvements. And it's a lot harder for us to do that on the special use permit. However, those are things that we look at when we're thinking of giving or granting a special use permit to a particular applicant. And I thought about this project back and forth. I went to the original Save, Save The Hunt Ridge organizational meeting years ago. And a secondhand dealer, I went back and forth thinking, is this right for this area? A lot of neighbors wanted to see a theater. Is that really coming? Probably not. I looked at the planned commission hearing from September 25th, 2008. It was a great plan, but as Commissioner Truesdale said, it'd probably never be built, which it wasn't. So what can we put in that building which will force you to do some improvements just so the building doesn't fall apart? And if you were to put in, unfortunately, I was going to use as an example earlier a secondhand dealer which was coming to Rampart, either Tivoli Village or Boca Park. And when I first seen it, I was a little shocked that they would have that out there. But then I started looking at the pictures and backup information, and it was upper end, high scale. And it's a place where you'd go in, you'd have a coffee, and you would be able to buy not, you would buy gently used items and a lot of new items, not old sofas. And so, and just with the track record of, well, I guess of your family and what you all have done with that property throughout the years, I don't see it being any different than the Savers or the thrift shop on the other side of Resco and the Swap Meet on Bruce and Charleston, who put no money into their buildings, just, just want to operate. And I believe that you would open this because you would put no money into it and you would just open. So, and considering all, all those facts, and Jennifer and Melissa and Downtown Steve and Gina and Ms. Carr and Donald and everybody who's come out here today, you won't see my support on this project.
Thank you. If we're ready for a motion, Commissioner?
Madam, Madam Chair, on item number 46, SUP 43985, I make a motion for denial.
Thank you. That motion is for denial. Please cast your vote.
Yes.
Post. That motion passes for denial.
Please.
On, on item 47, SUP 43987, I make a motion for denial.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for denial. Thank you.
Madam Chair. Both of those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Excuse me, before this neighborhood leaves, Ms. Kathleen Carr, if you could leave with the, for the record, with the girls down here, those photos, those were copies, am I correct? Could we have those, please, for the record? And anybody else that has any photos, we'd like to keep a good eye on this and keep them in our records so that we can look back on them later. So if anybody could leave their photos for the record, we'd appreciate it at this time. And we're going to move on now to item 48, which is an SUP 43999, an application owner, Vegas Car Wash LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit to reestablish an abandoned car wash, self-service use with waivers to allow the opening of the wash base to face public right-of-way, to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residential property where a minimum of 200 feet is required, and to allow the use to be accessible to the public after business hours at 3810 North Jones Boulevard. Staff recommends approval, and it's along with companion item number 49, SDR 43997, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review to add an auto smog check and office to an existing car wash, self-service facility with waivers to allow landscape buffer lifts of 12 feet along a portion of the west perimeter and five feet along the south perimeter where 15 feet is required. Staff.
Madam Chair, the, in regards to the special use permit, a special use permit was previously approved in September of 2010. That use permit expired in September of last year, in 2011. And staff does recommend approval to reestablish the car wash at this location and finds the use to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area. In regards to the site development plan review, there are waivers that are requested that is the current site conditions at the location, and staff is supporting those current site conditions and recommends approval of that application also.
Thank you, Mr. Rayken. Could you please state your name and address for the record, sir?
Don Robinson, 7150 Beverly Glen, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89110. Property owner. And we have just purchased this. As staff has noted, it was FDAC, FDIC. And we've been in the process of trying to obtain permit because our use permit had run out during the time it was vacant. We are thinking that it will be an asset to get it reopened, the community. We've had vandalism there, and we'd like to get it opened back up. It's going to include an office, whether it be onsite management. So I think that it will change things. We've had graffiti that continually has to be painted out and wire theft. So it's something we're trying to get online to get taken care of.
And you've reviewed all staff's recommendations and you agree with all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak on this item? If so, come forward now or we'll close the public hearing and move on. Okay, commissioners, ready? Commissioner Moody?
If there's no discussion on this, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Thank you.
Regarding item 48, SUP 43999, move to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. And post. Thank you. That motion passes.
Item 49, SDR 43997, also move to follow staff's recommendation for approval with conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. And that motion also passes.
Madam Chairman, those items are final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 50, SDR 43961. The applicant is John Stalupa Jr., owner Danielle Realty Centennial Azure, for possible action on a request for a major amendment previously approved site development plan reviews, Z-0057-98 and Z-0057-98, parentheses, number three, for proposed motor vehicle sales, new dealership at 7,000 West Sahara Avenue. Staff recommends approval and staff.
Madam Chair, staff finds the proposed project being in formance with the previous approvals and recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Chairman Quinn, commissioners, my name is Michael Bellon, 1408 Saintsberry Drive, representing the applicant. As we seek no zone change, no special use permit, no variance of any kind, no waiver of any condition, as we believe it is an exceptionally compatible use, staff recommends approval, and as I'd love to get home and say goodnight to my son before he goes to sleep, barring any devastating comments from Mr. Farlow, I submit to your questions and ask for your approval.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, would anybody else like to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and we will turn it over to our commissioners for a motion. Yeah.
Seeing that there's no comments, I'd like to go ahead and move to approve SDR 43961, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Please vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you very much. And as I am the last person, can I say goodnight to my son?
Yes, you can.
All right. Go to bed, Vincent. Brush your teeth. Daddy loves you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we move on to Mr...
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Yes.
That item will be going forward to City Council on February the 15th.
Okay. And now we move on to Mr. Farlow's favorite time of the night, citizens' participation. It's a public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as the amount of time any single speaker is limited to two minutes.
I think that we ought to have applause for Commissioner Truesdale's new beard. I think that looks very distinctive.
Oh, thank you.
You know, he grew that while you were commenting so many times.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.